Good evening, everyone. If everyone would please take your seats, we're about to get started. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, February the 28th, 2023. The last day in February came so very fast. I'd like to welcome everyone in our city council cha-chambers, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Member Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grayb. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Ruckregel.
Present.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer and silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations, or we have the notice to read for the township.
This is a notice to our township electors pursuant to Public Act 095-0761. If you desire to have an item considered on the agenda at the annual town meeting to be held Tuesday, April the 11th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, you are required to bring a specific request signed by 15 or more electors to the township clerk's office no later than tomorrow, Wednesday, March the 1st. Any group of registered voters may request an advisory question of public policy for consideration by the electors at the annual meeting by giving written notice of the specific advisory question to the township clerk in the same manner as required for an agenda item under subsection B of section 30-10 of the Township Code. We have three proclamations this evening. The first is to acknowledge World Day of Prayer. We have joining us Ms. Ina Norgard and Ms. Doris Wyannith with the Women's Church Women United, correct, ladies?
Yes.
Okay. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Church Women United is a racially, culturally, and theologically inclusive ecumenical women's movement; and whereas World Day of Prayer is a worldwide movement of Christian women of various races, cultures, and many traditions who come together to observe a common day of prayer each year, and who in many countries have a continuing relationship in prayer and service; and whereas through World Day of Prayer, women affirm that prayer and service are inseparable and that both have immeasurable influence in the world; and whereas the Church Women United will lead the community in World Day of Prayer on Friday, March 3rd, 2023, at Salem Lutheran Church located at 1700 West War Memorial Drive, all are welcome to attend. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim March 3rd, 2023, as World Day of Prayer."
Thank you very much, Mayor Ali. Church Women United is active and alive in our country, and in our city, and in our state. Patty Polk regrets that she could not be with us tonight. She is currently the Vice President of the State of Illinois, and she is the immediate past president of the National Church Women United. On Friday this week, just three days from now, we will be meeting at Salem Lutheran Church. This is where Inez Norgard is a member, and they are hosting us. The material that we will be following is written by the Ladies of Taiwan, and it's the scripture that that they are using is Ephesians 1:15-19, and the theme is, "I have heard about your faith." There are many beautiful pictures that we have that will be on the screen, interesting music that they have given us to to use, and a wonderful program. We hope that everyone present, and you will invite friends, we would like to fill the church, and that would take a lot of people. So please come and join us, we welcome you all.
Thank you, ladies, I enjoyed last year's program, fantastic. Our next proclamation celebrates acknowledges MS Awareness Week. We have Brian Gorsuch with the Community Council, he's the president. Whereas multiple sclerosis is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting 2.8 million people worldwide, over 1 million in America; and whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, Greater Illinois Market, reports that over 21,000 people are living with MS in Illinois, and that the disease generally strikes people in the prime of life between ages 20 through 50; and the cause and course of the often debilitating symptoms of MS remain unknown, and no cure currently exists. Whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been committed for 77 years to a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge and insight into the disease; and whereas since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatments, and a cure, and has invested more than $1 billion in groundbreaking research. Whereas funds raised through the National Multiple Sclerosis Society fuel $42.1 million, funding 380 research projects at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the United States and abroad, leading to many breakthroughs in the treatment of MS. And whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society and one that all Americans and Illinoisans should support. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim March 12th through March 18th as MS Awareness Week in Peoria, Illinois." Mr. Gorsuch?
Madam Mayor, Chief, City Council Members, speaking for the National MS Society and the entire MS community, I'm extending a heartfelt thanks and a gratitude for your recent proclamation in support of MS Awareness Week. Your efforts in raising awareness about multiple sclerosis are truly commendable, and it's heartening to see the City of Peoria showing support for multiple sclerosis. As someone who is personally affected by multiple sclerosis, I understand the challenges that people with MS and their families face every day. This disease can have a profound impact on a person's quality of life, and it is crucial that we work together to raise awareness and advance research towards finding a cure. The National MS Society has many arms, from programs, support, and advocacy, but our main thrust is research. The National MS Society is dedicated to advancing the understanding and treatment of MS through groundbreaking research, and we are proud to say that we are currently funding 380 new and ongoing MS research studies around the world, with 10 of these studies taking place right here in Illinois. When fundraising, people often ask me, "Do the funds stay in Illinois?" And my response is always, "Does MS stay in Illinois?" Well, to that point, we are delighted to partner with the Illinois State Lottery for the MS Project, an instant win ticket, and we are thrilled to see the net proceeds from the ticket sales going into the Illinois Lottery MS Research Fund. This fund is critical in supporting the research efforts of neurologists, scientists, and other medical professionals across the state who are working towards a better understanding and treatment of MS. We are also actively recruiting and providing grants for providers to specialize in MS care. The Illinois Neurological Institute has met the requirements to be certified as an MS, a National MS Society MS Care Center, and one of Peoria's newest providers, Springfield Clinic, has expanded neurology to Peoria with the goal of becoming a National MS Society MS Care Center. We're also working with Ucomp and Bradley University to provide educational programs on multiple sclerosis. With that said, I am emphasizing the National MS Society supports the City of Peoria to become a premier biotech center. Your support, our efforts in Peoria is greatly appreciated, and we are proud to be partners with you in our efforts to improve the lives of those affected by MS. That always makes me emotional. Thank you once again for your proclamation in support of MS Awareness Week, and that we look forward to continuing our partnership with you in the future. I would like to invite the council and the community to join us on April 23rd at Walk MS Peoria. This walk has been in Peoria for over 30 years, and to register, go to walkms.org. Thank you very much.
For your leadership. Our final proclamation recognizes American Heart Month. We have Fire Chief Saulberger and Mr. Andrew Rand, CEO of Advanced Medical Transport, AMT. Whereas since February is American Heart Month, it's a good time to champion healthy hearts while raising awareness about cardiac emergencies and diseases. Whereas tonight, we acknowledge the medical excellence of Advanced Medical Transport, AMT, and the Peoria Fire Department in a medical response for sudden cardiac arrest, which continues to be the leading cause of death in America. Whereas AMT and the Peoria Fire Department are involved in a partnership known as the Race to the Top Program, which operates to improve cardiac arrest survival through evidence-based practice, industry-leading expertise, crew experience, patient outcomes, and data-driven operational decision-making. And whereas the national leading practice of PICC crew-style CPR ensures high-quality CPR is performed through on-scene collaboration and is the foundation of successful cardiac results; and whereas in a recent nationally-recognized clinical publication, Peoria-area patients with a stopped heart were three times more likely to survive neurologically intact than the national average. Whereas, yes, that's worth clapping for. Whereas the practice and results of the Peoria collaboration are transforming standards of care and establishing the best practice for cardiac response in the United States and the world. Now therefore I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby acknowledge February as American Heart Month.
Madam Mayor and distinguished council, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to recognize the collective efforts between two agencies working together over a long period of time. This is only one example of when people put their minds together and they work together on a very consistent basis. We we respond together dozens of times a day, every day. And the particular events that we're talking about, cardiovascular, cardiac arrest, these are some of the more difficult calls that we go on, on a very regular basis. And for us to be able to think outside of the box, and I know Director Rand and their crew at AMT working with us, it's a very, very long list, and I could bore you just naming the people that were that started this program. It's so impactful, and so you see the results of that, three times the national average. I think that that bears repeating, and I think it also bears repeating the fact that we were one of the only communities when this first started throughout the whole United States, and that we understood why, why we should do this. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I think that it's important for us to recognize, it's easier for us to stand up here and and talk about all of these things. The harder part is is to be on that event. So I do want to applaud our firefighters and our paramedics through both agencies that are on these calls and to have these types of results, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Rand?
Mayor, members of council, thank you for having us back again tonight. I want their heart, American Heart Association comes every February, and it seems like we have opportunities at proclamations each and every year, but this year is particularly special because the results that are coming out of our program, which is designed to minimize variability so that we can measure what works, modify what doesn't, and then go back and start that over again the next day. Each week, our teams review, I think it's on Wednesday, three to five cardiac arrests, and there are several hundred data points per event that we're monitoring and studying. The main point being that positive outcomes in eliminating variability is what we've been striving for for several years, and it's starting to work. It's true that we've just been published in a national journal on cardiology so that other communities perhaps want to take some practices of ours, but what happens at the beginning, middle, and end of the day is there's a tremendous level of collaboration between the fire medical crews and our crews at AMT. And above all, over the decades, the collaboration has replaced, I think competitiveness and that common desire to serve the city that we're dedicated to serve is, I think, what's winning the race. So thank you for the recognition. I want to thank the chief because he's a new kind of leader for us to work with, and we're just so excited to work with him in Local 50. Thank you.
Thank you. It's it's an amazing program, Race to the Top, and it's producing amazing results. And Mr. Kravitz and other media, I hope that that you do something more to get the word out, help help to get the word out on this amazing program right here in greater Peoria. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at the the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the joint city council and town board meeting held on February 14th, 2023, as printed.
I get a second, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at public hearings. 23-054 is a public hearing regarding the annexation of parcel identification numbers 09-16-400-001 and 09-16-300-004, Peoria County, Illinois.
So I asked the question if, is there anyone who would like to speak to public hearing regarding the annexation of parcel identification numbers 0916400001 and 0916300-004? I do have some cards of individuals that have requested to speak, and if there are individuals that want to speak after the cards are announced, you will still have that opportunity. So first, we have Allen Curry. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I need a motion to open the public hearing. Moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously, and thank you, council. Mr. Curry?
Members for letting me have a time to speak up here. I didn't prepare any words, so I'm going to just speak from my personal experience. I'm a lifelong resident of Mossville. My whole life, we've spent watching my family go through extremes and local meetings and everything to try to keep Mossville Mossville. The City of Peoria has always been trying to slowly take bites out of Mossville, and it seems like the pace has rapidly picked up. I've noticed just from this even coming up, I went to the plat map, started looking to see who owns land around the area. And I've noticed over the years, the Pure Park District has bought up massive amounts of land all around Mossville, all around the Caterpillar Tech Center, all up through the woods. That's, of course, the reason why the township put up the Great Wall of Medina, the strip of land that kind of separates Mossville from the Peoria area. I have nothing personally against Peoria, but the reason why we live in Mossville is because we don't want to live in Peoria. I don't want to live in Chicago, I don't want to live in Chillicothe, I want to live in Mossville, that's where I spent my whole life. Like I said, I grew up listening to my parents talk about what we could do to keep Mossville Mossville, how Mossville's a good place to live. I love the members of Mossville, our township's great. I see no problem with working with Peoria, but things have been done to Mossville for long periods of time, like we can never get access to city water. Now we got water mains that run through Mossville, but yet you can't access it. When I was an engineer on the Chillicothe Fire Department, we could never come to agreements where we could get any kind of mutual aid, either to Peoria or from Peoria. So there's been, I guess, an animosity almost between Peoria and Mossville. And we want to keep Mossville Mossville. And like I said, this isn't about hating Mossville or any anything like that. It's just that people come to Mossville, want to live in Mossville because it's Mossville. Now with this land that they want to subdivide, they want to bring that into Peoria, if you go through and look at the plat maps, you will find it's a steady chain of either park district land or city land slowly encroaching. And the idea is to surround Mossville to force the annexation of it. The gentleman and the people that own this land that want to have it subdivided, or you do decide to annex this Mossville, you got to look for all the infrastructures you will have to put in, like the fire hydrants, the water mains, sewage, that's all by law has to be put in once it becomes the City of Peoria. So this is, to me, as far as I'm concerned, a big can of worms. And like I said, Peoria could move on, Peoria is not a bad city, not bad people, it's not about hate or anything like that. But the subdivision of this lot will just further this agenda to take Mossville in. And tax dollars are draining out of Medina Township with Caterpillar shrinking. I know that would have been a big motivation, to capture that land, to get Caterpillar within the city limits, to bring in tax funds and whatever that the city could benefit from it. But now, like I said, over the last several years, Caterpillar itself's been shrinking, tearing down buildings. Caterpillar will not be in Mossville forever, and by the time the City of Peoria gets gets a hold of it, they're going to have more of a burden for the City of Peoria rather than the benefits that they would have been receiving. So therefore, I would like to ask that this this City of Peoria do not annex this land. Because there are a lot of residents that feel this way, but a lot of them don't even know what is going on around. But if this does go forward, I I'm going to spend the rest of my time educating everybody in this area of the things that they may not be aware of, like the the park district land. That's why they're closing golf courses and everything like that, because they're trying to liquidate as much money as they can to buy up as much land as they can. And just go to the plat maps, look around, just start clicking, and you'll start seeing who owns this land and why the hell would they want to own a bean field? I don't, I don't get it. But either way, I'll just surrender the rest of my time, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Next, we have Kurt Stepping.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kurt Stepping. I live at 14127 Ivy Lake Road. Ivy Lake Road is roughly half a mile to the east and runs north and south for approximately two miles relative to the properties in question here. A couple of things I wanted to point out here. One is, I don't think any of the Redman, I'll speak specifically for myself, but I think most would probably concur that we don't have anything, this is not personal with the Herman Brothers or fence-lined properties. I would even ask if, is it possible to allow the properties to be sold, subdivided into the four plats that they want, and allow for single-family housing? The pre-annexation agreement that I've read over is specific to single-family housing. It does not allow for multiple-family housing or any recreational uses. It's single-family housing and/or agriculture, you know, existing uses on there. Also, one of the things that's in there is a a mention of if the properties down the road were to be further subdivided, then it would require a public sanitary system to be constructed there. One of the things you'll note on one of the plat maps, a survey comment on there that this is a floodplain on there. Do you want to inherit a floodplain and try to incorporate a sewage treatment facility or sewage facilities in there? Construction of a sewage plant, other facilities there such as that, then would require an NPDES permit. An NPDES permit on a floodplain, I don't know all the details with that, I'm primarily... I'm primarily familiar with NPDES testing requirements, as I worked forty-one years in that market, but I don't know that that's something that the city of Peoria wants to take on. I believe you have enough issues with your existing CSO with Illinois River and the US EPA that this would just exacerbate that, that issue. There's already an existing NPDES discharge into Dickerson Run Creek that goes through there. I have not FOIA'd the information, but I suspect there's probably exceedances there. A new sewage treatment facilities on a floodplain, when it floods, which, you know, it will flood at some point in time, now you're just talking more issues of E. coli and fecal coliform going through Dickerson Run Creek ultimately to the, into the Illinois River and aggravating your CSO issue that you're already dealing with. I don't know that you have an answer for that yet. I know there's a lot of stuff in the works, but this is only going to complicate that. Another thing that I noticed specifically in the pre-annexation agreement, that I want to make sure that the council is aware of this, is the language in that agreement says that, you know, it's a twenty-year agreement. Well, when we read the public hearing that the zoning commission had a couple of weeks ago, then they said, well, okay, if nothing happens in twenty years, it all will just go away. Well, the fine print in that agreement has language in there that stipulates, or mutual agreement of the parties, it can be extended. So, twenty years isn't twenty years. There isn't a definite timeframe on this. If the city and whoever, it's hard to say who's going to own the property, you know, twenty years from now, but if the owner and the city then both mutually agree, this can go on and on and on and never end. That's one of the things I hope that you're all aware of in that pre-annexation agreement. And also point out, too, that all the things I've seen, the agendas, things on the media, whatnot, all say that this is an annexation. Well, it's not, just make clear that it's not an annexation. My understanding at this point, it is a pre-annexation, and annexation will only happen if it becomes contiguous with the city of Peoria, and there's twenty years down the road. But twenty years isn't necessarily a magic number. Then, there's language in there that that could go on, you know, as long as possible by mutual consent of both parties. So, I'm sure others will have more details. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mr. Stepping. Next, we have Rick Scott-Hodder.
Mayor, council members, my name is Rick Schotover. Our property and our family farms occupy the north side of the property that's in question. Lived there since nineteen fifty-six, and I wanted to fill you in a little bit on the history of the valley down there. First off, the parcel that we're talking about is definitely in a flood-prone plain, okay? This property I have grown up on, across the street from, has had major flooding several times. In nineteen seventy, the creek came out of its boundaries. It took out Cedar Hills Drive in two spots, took the whole bridge out at the base of the hill, and a brand-new bridge had to be built, and the old one hauled away. Okay? This is just not a little creek going through. Also, with this creek, the affluence coming out of Lake of the Woods Treatment Plants go down this creek. So, there's question there about the viability of either drawing water out of there or using it for a septic system, okay? That's just a little history on the ground itself. I received a notice that asked my opinion and on the annexation of this property. It's actually a pre-annex, pre-annexation, but I was told by the city, they classified it as a type of annexation, okay? Immediately went to our neighbors. We organized and wanted to get the opinion of the community out there. We took and organized both electronic petition and also written petition. I personally went door-to-door in a lot of instances. The results of produced a unanimous, solid core of citizens and property owners. Over three hundred in this community are opposed to the pre-annexation of the property. This property, we do not have an objection with being divided. We just do not want the city coming over the Medina Wall, which was created approximately twenty years ago. I could be off a year or two on that. With this, we then went to the township. The township has given us a hundred percent support, the road commissioner, the trustees, and they are totally behind the objection. So, I am asking you to vote no on the pre-annexation of this property. It's within your power to vote no, and we, as a community and as the township, are asking for a no vote tonight. Thank you very much.
We have Wes Jacobson.
And ladies and gentlemen of the city council. Stephanie, and my handouts are out with each of the members. You've been provided handouts. I would like you to pick up the one labeled city of Peoria Municipal Code subdivision. There's been a lot of confusion about whether this is required or not, and this is your city code. I'd like to direct you down to the bottom of page one, where it says the subdivision plats for land within one and a half miles of the jurisdiction, jurisdiction, maybe. That's maybe. It doesn't say required or have to, but it may be reviewed. So, it's not a requirement. I'd like to direct you to the third page. I'd like you to direct you to the bottom, and it, these are the procedures, review procedures per ordinance. The bottom one says plat within one and a half miles of the extraterrestrial jurisdiction can be divided. There's no notification of citizens required. The director can approve it, and the zoning board does that. But for some reason, our friend from Fence Line, it was directed to follow the column that's highlighted above in three, which brings us to where we are tonight. I just want the members of the council to realize that this isn't the required method. He was directed to go this way, and what we'd like to know is, why does that benefit him, and how does it benefit the city to do this? Those questions have not been answered, and, and because you are home rule here, I'd like to direct you to the last page of this code. There are special circumstances or conditions where you can change the code that you have. There is, if modification is necessary for the homeowner, you can do them, your home rule. And you can do these things, making sure there are no detriments to the public or to the welfare of the citizens of both Peoria County and the city of Peoria. Now, I'd like to quickly review the Development Review Board analysis. That's a single sheet of paper, a handout you should have. It's a matrix. All of you have that? Thank you. So, you have what the review board's analysis was. It looked boilerplate. It does not show any, you know, concerted effort from the public's point of view. The first review, no detriment to public health, safety, or general welfare. We've got a floodplain. It's not contiguous to Peoria policing, fire, road districts, via roads, further sketch, and it further stretches the lean capability of our resources in the city right now, fire, police, and the roadworks. There's over three hundred residents now that have signed a petition not to do this. These people live in rural, and they like it that way, and it's not, it's not going to diminish our property values. Well, the people that live there don't like it, and the tax rate increases by sixteen-point-five percent. And it's safe to say, higher taxes, lower property values. So, on point number two, there is injury. No impediment to orderly development. Usually, when the state legislature put this together, they're expecting roads, city water, gas lines, electricity, and everything to be available for orderly development, like we have out by, you know, Grand Prairie. That's all flowing nicely. This is a bluff that is used to hunt, and we've got agriculture on. This is not orderly development. You can read the rest. There's some safety concerns about traffic on the road. It's going to increase because there's going to be residents there. So, on behalf of over three hundred of Peoria County's residents, we'd like you to vote no on this proposal. If not, table it. And there are other options where all parties win, the cities of northern Peoria, the citizens of Peoria, and Fence Line Properties, and I would hope that we would all work together with our friends of the north of the city and our friends of the south part of the county and Medina Township. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Next, we have Bill Jones. Is Bill Jones speaking to this issue? Bill, are you speaking to this particular issue?
No.
Okay, alrighty. We have Brian Alsesser.
Thank you, Mayor Ali, city council members. Brian Alsesser, Peoria County Board, I represent the area that's, we're talking about tonight with the pre-annexation agreement. Thank you so much for talking to me over the last few weeks on the phone, for those of you who did and listening to me. I really do appreciate it. Tonight, I'm here because three hundred of my constituents and a lot more of them, if they knew about it, would be very willing to sign a petition. And that's a lot, because I do want to share with you just three different things that I've heard over the last few weeks. And first of all, initially, there was the suggestion that this is a requirement. Well, I know after talking to Leah, she said it is a requirement in your, in your code to, and the protocol in your code to ask for pre-annexation on a zoning case, but then it's not a state law or a city of Peoria law. So, I know you normally do this, but when you, have you ever had a situation before where you've had three or four hundred people opposing something? I mean, that's a lot of people, especially out in the county. Now, I know, I know in the city you may have issues, and the population is much more dense, and it might not be hard to find three or four hundred people. So, I would ask for that consideration. And number two, I've also heard that, that it's a way for the city of Peoria to control the zoning, and the zoning will be under the auspices of the county, whether there is a pre-annexation agreement or whether there isn't a pre-annexation agreement. And after I get done speaking later on, please correct me if any of these things are inaccurate. And the third thing that I kept hearing throughout the week was that the petitioner requested the pre-annexation agreement. Now, I talked to the petitioner a month ago, and I talked to him again yesterday, and that would not be accurate. He would have not wanted the pre-annexation agreement, but it was the only way for his subdivision plat to be passed. And also, I wanted to mention after these three points, that there was a, one of my constituents who's an attorney that couldn't be here tonight, and she said to ask the council this. She said, why would you want a pre-annexation agreement in an area where there is no public water or public sewer? Aren't you going against the rules and the codes that the city has in place for situations like this? And I thought that was a very good point. Tonight, I humbly ask that you would consider this. I hope that at least two of you will make a main motion and a second to remove the requirement of the pre-annexation agreement, and then the majority of the council would vote against the pre-annexation agreement, and then afterwards, support the subdivision plat. I think this is about relationships. I've been saying, and I said it in my email that I sent to all of you, the city does best what the city does, the county does best what the county does, and we all have a lot of work to do. And the city and the county, and all of you would admit, that we don't have enough resources to do everything we want to do. I think that would be an accurate statement. And so, for, for good relationships, please consider this. I can honestly say that if someone said, I want to give the county ninety acres in the middle of the city, I promise you that I would not vote for that. Number one, because we have enough to take care of ourself, and number two, it just wouldn't be a good, a good community relationship situation. And so, again, thank you for listening to me, and thank you for your consideration, and please, please vote against the pre-annexation agreement. I think it will create a much better feeling for, between the Medina Township and the city and the county, and it will put all these residents at, more at ease for the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alsesser. And before I call you up, Mr. Herman, I want to ask, is there anyone else that would like to speak to public hearing regarding the annexation of parcel identification numbers zero-nine dash sixteen dash four-zero-zero dash zero-zero-one and zero-nine dash sixteen dash three-zero-zero dash zero-zero-four? Chad Herman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Appreciate the opportunity just to share our, our position here is, we would like four parcels in our ninety-acre tract. We are surrounded by fifteen parcels of land, all from one-point-two-one acres to fifty acres on our northeast, south, and west. And so, when we look at the community and what the community wants, they want rural lots between one-point-two-one acres and fifty acres, and that's our proposal, is to do these rural lots from ten, thirteen, thirty-two, and thirty-two acres. We've told that our avenue is pre-annexed, so that's why we're here tonight. And who we are is, we are a group of eighteen couples that love land, love the outdoors. We love the, to improve land and enjoy it, and we have workdays on these lands to try to keep our friendships rolling and see each other. We also have some young couple that is interested in buying thirty-two acres from us to build their dream home. We would love that opportunity to give them this opportunity as well. So, we've heard a lot about the floodplain. Our, our land is ninety acres of land. There's roughly a less than a third of that in the floodplain, so there's sixty acres of land that are wonderful to build on. As a former builder, I can assure you, there's some wonderful spots there. And in regards to this petition, we have been approached multiple times by people who have said there's lots of misinformation in this petition. There's rumors of factories, section-eight homes, a lot of fear mongering going on. There's rumors of factories, Section 8 homes, a lot of fear mongering going on of what our purpose is and our goal is. Our goal is rural residential homes on large tract lands that are completely in, in realm with all the community around us. And, um, that, that's what we really want to do. We want to be treated like everybody else and have the ability, like all the 15 parcels around us, to parcel off our land into four parcels, to be able to improve each for a future home for somebody. So that's, uh, where we're at, at Fence Line Properties, and we really appreciate you considering our pre-annex tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. And this would be the, this would be the last call. If anyone would like to speak to public hearing regarding the annexation of parcel identification numbers With that, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 23-055 is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. 23-056 is a communication with request to approve the low bid from CNG Concrete Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $1,357,370 for the sidewalk and ADA ramp program, with an additional authorization of $135,737 for contingencies, for a total contract award of $1,493,107. And on your desk, there is a handout with three maps. 23-057 is a communication with request for the following. A, to approve a contract with JIMAX Landscape LLC for the tree and stump removal by size tree trimming by hourly rates to December 31st, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $70,000. And B, to approve a contract with JIMAX, JIMAX Landscape LLC for the emergency tree and stump removal by size and tree trimming by hourly rates to December 31st, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $30,000. 23-058 is a communication with request to approve a three-year sole-source contract with municipal emergency services to purchase fire turnout gear as needed. Requires two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting, no less than six votes. 23-046 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Subsection 52 of the Code of the City of Peoria to create the Class NP liquor license. And 23-059 is a communication with request for the following. A, to approve an incumbency certificate and resolution accepting a grant from the Illinois Housing Department Authority for the home repair and accessibility program in the amount of $300,000. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2023 revised annual budget relating to the capital fund to recognize the receipt of a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the home repair and accessibility program, and the corresponding expenditures in the amount of $300,000, which requires a two-thirds vote of corporate authorities, eight votes. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a clarification on 23-058. Requires two-thirds vote of councilmembers voting. Is that correct? No less than six votes? Council?
Thank you. So our ordinances provide that, but we don't know how many councilmembers are going to be present. So if we were short a member, or two, or three, it would take, we would still have a quorum. It would take two-thirds of the members voting on that matter. But the ordinance also provides, but not what, it has to be at least six votes. Tonight, it requires eight votes, if everybody votes. I don't know if anyone's going to abstain or not be present, but that's why it's written that way, because it respects the language of our ordinance. Thank you.
So tonight, it would require eight votes. Thanks for that clarification. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Grab?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. 23-059.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 23-056.
Thank you. Are there any other items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve the, uh, the consent agenda? Moved by Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-056 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with request to approve the low bid from CNG Concrete Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $1,357,370 for the sidewalk and ADA ramp program, with an additional authorization of $135,737 for contingencies, for a total contract award of $1,493,107. And on your desk, there is a handout of the maps.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Perhaps I'm the only one in this boat. I'm sort of file-challenged. And I really, really appreciate the iPad that the city provides. And all the items on the agenda and all their attachments, et cetera, are on that iPad. And I don't have to buy a filing cabinet at home. I can just look it up on here. But oftentimes, we get things like this. This is wonderful. I'm all in favor of it. But why, you know, this is on the agenda. We've known it's on the agenda, and several other items here. And, uh, oftentimes, most of the time, these things are included, uh, on the iPad. But I would just like to, uh, urge the, uh, clerk or the city manager to make sure that we're not getting a whole lot of stuff on the night of the meeting, that it is available to us ahead of time. So with that, I will move to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach? Sorry about that. Any other discussion? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to wait and make comments under new business on this item, but since you've pulled it, Councilman, I'll just say, thank you to Public Works for taking the request of council serious during, um, the budget cycle. And Councilwoman Jensen was very adamant about doing sidewalks throughout the city that were in need of repair. So, um, hats off to the Engineering Department and Public Works. And, um, I'm fully in favor of supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm in support of this, but I do have a question for, I think I saw Director Powers walk in. Sorry, I can't see you behind the podium. Are these the only sidewalks that we're moving forward with, with repairs for this next year? Because, I mean, when you look at the map, it's only, it looks like, um, three and a half blocks in District 2, and about the same in District 3 and 5. And to me, that's just, um, I see the manager shaking his head, yes. That's such a little amount. You know, and here we are tonight going to consider issuing bonds for $20 million to help the Civic Center with their capital expenses. And we need to be using our money and our bonds to improve the sidewalks in the older parts of the city and even the newer parts. So I, I'm just going to make that point again. I think we should be spending more dollars in improving the sidewalks throughout the city, but primarily in the older neighborhoods. I don't know if you want to comment to that, Director Powers?
I will. Thank you, Councilor Jensen, for bringing that up. Actually, in District 3, there's significantly more than three blocks. There's three blocks approximately in District 2, I believe, and that, uh, well, actually, it's four. And then, there's some infill in District 5, and then significant work in District 3. And during the budget process, I know we talked a lot on this topic, and just the budget in general, and the challenges we're having across the board of improving sidewalk in Peoria, and what we were doing with some of the previous programs, how we parsed the work out, the cost of fuel, cost of materials, cost of the supply chain, everything that we are dealing with. It was actually difficult to bid those jobs. In fact, they didn't at one time, and we had to go back out. So we're making a concentrated effort now to focus the spending. And this is $1.3 million annually that we've committed perpetually during this program to move through the city and find the worst sidewalks and improve them. And invariably, we'll be moving through the city as we move through, based on condition and need. And a lot of that is complaint-driven, and then, of course, we go and assess it. Now, with that, keep in mind, in District 1, there's still $2 million pending for an investment in that area in sidewalks only. So on top of this $1.3 million in this year, we're still hoping to see that. And I understand that we will be seeing that $2 million for an investment in District 1 alone. So we're, over 3 million already in this year alone. And again, perpetually, we'll be spending $1.3 million, or we hope to, if the budget health stays the way it is, or fiscal health stays the way it is, throughout the years, and to move around the city in a more effective way. We also will still have the special service area. So I, I'm kind of going to go through, I guess, a bit of education here, so that people who still want to participate in what was formerly the Sidewalk Participation Program will now be entering into special service area agreements. Again, still involving a voting process for participation, then us doing a full assessment of the appraised value of the properties in that area, taking the full appraised value. The higher-priced homes, of course, would pay a higher share of the cost for the installation of sidewalks than the lower-appraised-valued homes. So they would be a weighted payment, if you will. However, each home, our property owner, would have one vote relative to participation or not. And again, please, Council, if I got that wrong, straighten me out, but I believe that's it. It's, that's pretty much in a nutshell. And we actually have one group that's come forward to us already in that interest, and we're working with them now, in fact, in District 2. Let's see if there's anything else that I wanted to cover in this area. I think that pretty much covers it. So to the point of you being in an older neighborhood, Councilor, we will be there. It's just, we have a finite amount of money. It's a million dollars or just over a million, and we will be moving through that area. And we'd like to do that just from an engineering perspective with all infrastructure, and let the conditions speak, and eventually cycle through the city. If we can keep the spending level where it is, we will get there. We will get there. It's just going to take a little time. So with that, I'll close it. If you have any further questions, I'll try to answer.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation.
Again, I just reiterate, I'm glad we're moving forward with this, and I, you know, wholeheartedly support these. But I hope we continue, and we look for spending more money towards repairing the sidewalks throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab?
So, Director, we had a change in programmatic design as it relates to sidewalk. And we thought that it would be most efficient to do huge hunks of our city at the same time with no cost to our citizens other than what they normally pay in terms of taxes. But that would not rule out what I think you're referring to, Councilor Jensen, the longstanding, uh, initiatives that citizens could take to fix up, uh, their particular sidewalk and/or curb. And I know Councilman Sandberg worked hard to liberalize the allowance to make it easier for people to do this. And we really didn't have the free component, I'll put that in quotation marks, back then. So if anything, we're probably going to be able to do more lineal feat of sidewalk with the free quote-unquote combined with the SSA, Special Service, uh, option, where citizens can band together, or they can individually agree to pay part. What would it be if they don't want to wait 1,000 years for us to have these red lines crisscross the entire city? Is that?
That is correct, Councilor. It would, I would say, in essence, move them, because we have a commitment that would, we would meet that match and perform the project.
See, I never thought a, a number of years ago, we would ever get to the point where we would be doing this for free. Never. So what we have here is a bonus. We aren't going backwards. We're, we're not subtracting. We're adding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
We have a motion and a second to approve 23-056. If there's no more discussion, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-059 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request for the following. A, to approve an incumbency certificate and resolution accepting a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the home repair and accessibility program in the amount of $300,000. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2023 revised annual budget relating to the capital fund to recognize the receipt of a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the home repair and accessibility program, and the corresponding expenditures in the amount of $300,000. And Item B requires a two-thirds vote of all corporate authorities.
Councilmember Grab?
Thank you, Mayor. Manager, I mentioned something to you before the meeting started, and I would just like to say it publicly. I think that your staff has been working overtime to, um, lift our city up and help to provide a renaissance for our city. And this is a time for us to make up for lost time, pandemic years, et cetera, with some of these unprecedented funds, both federal and state, that are coming to our city to lift this city up and lift our neighborhoods up. Director Doolin, I know you've been working overtime with your staff. Could you just give a brief precis of what's involved here in both A and B? And, and then we can go from there.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman. Um, so the item in front of you, the, the City of Peoria submitted for a competitive grant through the Illinois Housing Development Authority for $300,000. It was a grant opportunity, uh, that we competed with municipalities throughout the state. City of Peoria was lucky to be selected. Uh, we were receiving $300,000 as kind of a sub-program of theirs specifically for roofs. Uh, the need in our community for new roofs is very high. In addition to this program, every year, we have a roofing program with our community development block grants. Uh, we have about slots for about 20 roofs through that program. This year, the program, uh, application period closed about three weeks ago, and we had 91 applicants. So unfortunately, only 20 of those 91 applicants will get roofs. Luckily, with this additional funding from the State of Illinois, we'll be able to give about 15 more roofs into that list. Um, so the need and demand is definitely in our community. Uh, the, you know, a roof goes a long way in preserving a, a structure for a long time. If the roof goes, things start leaking, and that's when our property quickly goes to a demolition process. So, uh, we appreciate, uh, the Illinois Housing Development Authority making this, uh, grant award to us. Uh, also, MeTech, located down in 61605, also received, uh, this same grant, but for roofs and whole-house rehabs related to accessibility. Uh, so the total for the community to get about $1 million. Uh, the city gets about $300,000, and they're getting a large chunk of that. So they'll be releasing, uh, releasing their programs separately, but a lot of money coming to our community for home repair.
So this helps many of our citizens in our aging historic legacy neighborhoods to fix up their homes. And when you think about the City of Peoria as it's grown, 50 square miles, the heart of the city is probably the oldest. We have some of the oldest housing stock. It's not all in a, uh, city historic district or a national historic district. So this is going to afford the opportunity for some of our people who are stressed for cash to actually fix some of these big-ticket items up and keep them in a home that's been fixed up and repaired. And for that reason, I'm very grateful for these funds. And we have to continue to renew, uh, the housing stock in, uh, the heritage. and we have to continue to renew the housing stock in the heritage neighborhoods. And I think this goes a long way toward that. One question, Director. I'm pretty good after these years with the acronyms. But I can't, for the life of me, figure out what the acronym AMI stands for.
Area Medium Income.
Average Median.
Area Median.
Area, I didn't think average would go with median. Okay. Thank you very much. I would move to approve A, as outlined, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Thank you for highlighting this, Councilman Graham. It's a very important program. Any other discussion?
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since this was pulled, I do have one question. Director Doolin, will this $300,000 be in addition to the money that we typically use from HUD? So this is going to be extra? So how big, how much will the program be now?
We usually do about $350,000 to $400,000 of HUD funds. And so this will about, it'll take us from doing about 20 roofs to about 35 this year.
Terrific. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Great.
We're voting on Item A. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Graham?
Mayor Lee, I move to adopt the ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2023 Revised Annual Budget relating to the capital fund to recognize receipt of a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Home Repair and Accessibility Program and the corresponding expenditures in the amount of $300,000.
Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. 23-060 is a communication from the City Manager with a request for a discussion on funding additional capital for the Peoria Civic Center.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, at the request of Councilman Seer, he asked that we would have a discussion about ways that we can address the situation between the Civic Center and the Peoria Rivermen. And city staff over the last several weeks has been working, having some discussions with the Civic Center Authority, having some discussions with you, Madam Mayor, and as well, the liaison to the Civic Center, Councilman Ruckregel, about ways that we might be able to address the funding gap that the Civic Center currently has. They did a study several years ago that identified that they had about $47 million of unmet capital needs. And they have been, fortunately, the recipient of a $25 million state grant. The Civic Center Authority has prioritized that list. That list, as prioritized, is in your packet in the handout here. In addition, there's about six years that are remaining on the Civic Center 2007 expansion bonds. So that debt will run through 2028, payable on January 1 of 2029. How the city pays that debt on the Civic Center? It comes from hotel, restaurant, and amusement taxes. And we've seen that over the last seven years, we've been averaging roughly around $10 million a year of HRA taxes. But that includes the two years that we were affected by the pandemic. If we take the pandemic out, we've been running closer to the 10.6 to 10.8 million range in terms of revenues that we've collected. The cascade of funds from the HRA taxes are not the simplest drawdown, the way that we have it structured. The way that that drawdown works is that we pay our debt service first. The debt that we have on the Civic Center gets paid first. So that, you know, $7 million, $6.8 million a year of debt service that runs through 2029 is what gets paid first, because that's, you know, debt that we've obligated the city to pay back. After that, one-third of the A portion of the tax, which is the amusement tax, comes back to the city to fund city operations. One-quarter of the H tax, which is our hotel tax, which is set at 8% inside the city, comes back to pay for roads. We have used that. That was done in 2015. That was increased by 2%, and that money comes back to support our road network here inside the city. The next drawdown comes back out of the HRA taxes that are generated onsite in the Pure Marquette, and that's used to pay the debt service on the Pure Marquette. Following that, there is the distribution to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's about $542,000 annually that goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And following that, we distribute money to the Tourism Reserve Fund. The Tourism Reserve Fund is a joint effort between the CVB and the city, where events in the city, conventions, or, you know, events that may be going on either at the Civic Center or in the community, we use those dollars to subsidize portions of that event, or we'll use a large portion of it to market Peoria. We market the City of Peoria with those dollars to try and attract more tourists and more people to come to the City of Peoria. Lastly, we have funds for marketing the riverfront. We work with the Park District on marketing our riverfront activities. We have money that goes to arts partners. We have $100,000 that goes to arts partners. We take a little bit more for financial administration. And then what's left over goes to fund the maintenance of the Civic Center. And when you have a building the size of the Civic Center, you're going to have broken sinks, and you're going to have lights that go out, and you're going to have all of that cost of maintaining a building of its size and its complexity. Over the years, we have seen roughly about $1,006,000 being distributed going back to 2016 on an annual basis to the Civic Center Authority for maintenance and operations, except for the COVID years, those two years of the pandemic. The first year, 2020, when everything stopped, we only saw about $130,000 coming in. The next year, it was $700,000. This year, 1.6. So we're seeing that that number has picked back up to where we've been in the past. So as our finance team started looking at how we could look at where our debt was currently situated, and is there a way that we could maybe possibly wrap around debt with additional bond issuance? We looked at that and examined whether or not we could afford it. And as we started to look at that, I believe that we could afford a $20 million issuance of debt to provide additional capital expenditures for the Civic Center Authority. It would cost roughly about $900,000 a year for the next six years of additional debt service. And then after that debt service is paid off, it would increase to $1.9 million annually. And that would be for 14 years. So that, so again, the big chunk of debt service gets paid off from the HRA taxes that we're paying, that we're using to pay for that debt in 2029. And then, you know, as we start to look at this, we felt that what we could do is say to the Civic Center Authority, what we can do is we can provide you with a guarantee of $1.2 million of operations and maintenance support each year through that 2029 period. Once that period was complete, if the city has had to subsidize in any of those years, any of these six years that we're looking ahead, we would get paid back as if we were a bondholder, and that that money would come back out of HRA tax revenues to pay the city back. So we do think that this provides us an opportunity to, it doesn't close the gap entirely on all the Civic Center needs. And the Civic Center Authority, and I believe they're here in the audience this evening, the Chair of the Civic Center Authority and other members and their Chief Counselor are here in the stands, or the audience this evening. They have made a request, I think, of our legislature for additional support, additional grant support if it's available, as the budget process works its way through Springfield. But we do think that this is an option that allows for, the key piece being the ice plant, obviously, that helps us to fix that. It wouldn't be this year, it would likely be 2024, that they would have to plan for it, because you've got to clear all the events out of the Civic Center in order to be able to get that kind of work completed. And then lastly, you know, the question is, it would still require the Civic Center Authority, as the landlord, to negotiate a lease with the Peoria Rivermen. But this at least addresses the capital needs if we go forward with this. The way we've structured this, or whether we've put this in your packet, we've also included the outstanding capital that the Civic Center has identified. That's the second handout that's in your packet. As well, I think, in talking with our bond counsel and talking with our financial advisors, it's likely that we won't be able to issue any debt until May, just by the time we get all the paperwork put together. But it does provide us, I think, you know, this is just for discussion this evening. However, council wants to go forward, if you want to proceed forward with this, you know, if there's direction for us to come back to you with, you know, some sort of item for action, we can do that. But we wanted to have the discussion this evening with you, and so that's why we wanted to put this together.
Manager, thank you for that overview. Also, thank you for the due diligence involved in coming up with a strategy that will help to restore and protect one of our greatest assets, and that's the Peoria Civic Center. The Civic Center is important to all of us within the City of Peoria, as well as the greater Peoria area. The mission statement of the Civic Center is that "We will be a catalyst for improving the quality of life and economic vitality in our area by hosting diverse events that are enjoyed and supported by all segments of the general public." I don't think it's any secret to anyone that there is a need for capital improvements within the Peoria Civic Center. Those that have visited the Civic Center for various events may have seen, witnessed some of the repairs that are needed, the old carpet in the Civic Center. You may not have been high enough to see the roof needs, but they're certainly a big price item in preparing, in repairing the roof of the Peoria Civic Center, replacing it. So I want to first thank the State of Illinois for providing the $25 million capital grant through the leadership of Leader Jahan Gordon Booth. That certainly has helped tremendously. That money is actually flowing, and we're very grateful for that. But we, as a city, have a responsibility to help protect this asset. And so I'm just grateful for the discussions that have been held, discussions with our council liaison, Councilman Ruckregel. He's the liaison to the Peoria Civic Center Authority from the council. Councilmember Seer has been on these discussions as well. And again, Civic Center Chair Yvonne Greer, Yvonne Greer is here. And we may have some questions tonight, Mrs. Greer. So that's just to kick off our discussion, and that's what we're here to do tonight, is to begin the discussions on the improvements to the Peoria Civic Center.
Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for your words and your synopsis as well on being able to pull this together. And for our City Manager, thank you for laying out what really is ultimately a kind of a complicated issue. And I think one thing that's important for our audience to know is that unfortunately, the Civic Center doesn't have the ability to go out and release their own bonds. They don't have that vehicle, and so that's sort of what ties the city piece into the Civic Center piece. And I think it can't be overstated. And Madam Mayor, you mentioned it, and I'll reiterate it as well, that when a capital list was put together several years ago, there were those $47 million, and those were in those dollars. We've had some inflation as well, and some pressures on being able to get materials and things. But when that list was put together, we were very lucky in having Representative Gordon Booth in Springfield being able to find and to be able to work into the capital bill $25 million for us. And I think that that is actually the foundation for why we are able to have this discussion here tonight, because that had the Civic Center Authority really looking at the capital needs, and how do we be able to rally to be able to do those? I had a great question about, that was posed to me, about the lease and the timing. And why wasn't the lease done before? And I think for the public to understand, we have two great entities. We have the Civic Center Authority and the Rivermen, who both want to do the right thing and be able to have a really good partnership. And it is through no fault of either entity about how we got today, because you can't sign a lease without knowing what the plant and the physical conditions are going to be of where you're going to play, especially when you're signing a lease going on. And unfortunately, the Civic Center had capital needs, including the roof, that had to come in, and were on very limited dollars. What we have in front of us tonight is, I think, a very workable plan. I'd like to take a minute and be able to thank Councilmember Seer for leading off this conversation and for really bringing to the highlight and working with an idea that if we're going to address one need at the Civic Center, let's address the capital needs that really do improve the whole situation. And Councilmember Seer has, I think, really encapsulated the right thought in that, because it is the success of the Civic Center in totality, and we have a lot of capital needs. Carpeting, we can go through the list, you see them here, that really go to the quality of life. And the quality of life also includes the Rivermen, and we know that. We have a very workable plan, financially feasible. And one could say, well, let's wait till '29 until the bonds run out and then issue new bonds. But we can't wait that long, because we can't have a time where we don't operate, and the Rivermen are important to that operation. So what I would ask for council tonight is full support as we go into this, because this is an enhancement for our Rivermen. It's an enhancement to our Civic Center. It's an enhancement to our downtown. It's an enhancement to Peoria. And this is an enhancement to all of the areas that surround Peoria. This is really keeping the crown jewel, the crown jewel. Now, I think it's also important to understand that in this, and I believe, you know, again, I've got to go back to Councilmembers here, was asking, how do you keep the maintenance up, and those important questions? And that is why that $1.2 million that we talked about was there, because that's the protection gap. Somebody said, how do we not fall back into this area again? Because with the $25 million and this $20 million, we're able to get caught up. Capital needs, when you get behind, they're hard to be able to catch up. This catches us up, and it's able to be able to kind of, as I like to say, get that flywheel going again on the capital pieces so that then we have smaller projects that we can take on year in, year out. I know there's going to be some great questions tonight. I would ask for council support on this. And with this, this then allows us to be able to have the Civic Center Authority know that they've got the funding mechanism coming down the pipeline, because tonight's for discussion only, we would have an ordinance that would come next, and then we would have bonds that would come in the summer. But it gives them the ability to start negotiations for a lease, to be able to renew a lease with the Rivermen, and both those parties go in. It's important to know, and our City Manager said it, we have some dates. We've done some releasing of dates from the Civic Center for possible Rivermen games for next year. But we need to be able to solidify those, and that would come in those lease negotiations as well. And then the other part of that is for the future, because we wouldn't have this ice plant come in this season. We would have to do that next season, or between seasons. But next year, we would need to clear out the arena for a while while we do that. A lot of scheduling, a lot of sort of date works to be able to work around, but they all really hinge on everybody doing their individual pieces. Our piece really would be able to come up with the bonds to be able to fund this so that the Civic Center Authority can then do their next piece. So with that, I will, I'm free to answer any questions, or I know we've got our authority here as well, or the City Manager, and then I'll come back later on.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone who worked on this proposal. It's a step in the right direction. The Civic Center is one of our most precious asset in the region, and it's very important that we address those capital improvement needs. Civic Center's done a great job rebounding from the pandemic. But even before the pandemic... Civic Center's done a great job rebounding from the pandemic, but even before the pandemic, it was going on a great trajectory, so we want to continue that momentum. This also provides our authority to be able to negotiate with the Rivermen in good faith, and I'm sure that a deal will be forthcoming. I'm very excited about that potential. So again, thank you all so much for coming to the table and making this investment, because we know that the Civic Center not only is a quality of life asset, but it's also an economic driver for our city and our region. So thank you all so much, and I look forward to supporting this and for things to come. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I appreciate you reading the mission statement of the Civic Center, because I think that's really what this comes down to, is a quality of life issue. That doesn't mean that we don't have to have our hand on the pulse of making sure that it's financially viable, and I think there's a lot of work that we all need to do to ensure that. But I think this is an important step in the right direction in funding the needs of the Civic Center to have what I am hopeful is a world-class facility here, to not just make it better for the Rivermen, but attract other things to our Civic Center and our community to drive the revenue needs that it will take to continue to support not only the bond payments, but continued work on the Civic Center. I've met in the prior weeks here with both membership of the Authority Board and ownership of the Rivermen, and made it very clear that my expectation is that we're all operating in good faith here, and that we're working towards a fair negotiated contract for everyone, and that's what, to me, this is predicated on, is that we make an agreement here, and that my expectation is an agreement here, and that we are doing our part, now it's time for them to do theirs, and it has to be focused on a good working relationship amongst both parties that allows us to increase membership attendance at the games. We have to do better with marketing, we have to do better with engagement in the community and making sure that we have people in seats and enthusiasm. It was incredible to see what happened at the Bradley game over the weekend. 10,450 people in our Civic Center. I see no reason why we can't do that here, but it's going to take work on everyone's part to make sure that we're all working together on the same page, filling that arena for everyone's success. And so when that resolution does come, I will be in favor of the investment in the Civic Center and look forward to a successful negotiation between both parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. I share those same sentiments and those same expectations. Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we're over a barrel. I don't think we have much choice. I think we have to go forward with this, and I'll vote to go forward with it. I'm very upset. I'm very upset that a facility of this size and a community asset of this importance has not been continuously reinvesting capital. Twenty, I was shocked, as I said a couple weeks ago, that they were $25 million behind in capital. I was just being naive. $45 million behind, and I know what the council, Councilman said is catches us up. Now, I don't know, the whole thing is a little opaque to me, but I've heard that this doesn't catch us up. I don't know what that building's worth. I really don't. So let's say it's worth $100 million, and we've got capital needs of half of that value. Now, a few years ago, I assisted with the $4 million loan because of COVID to maintain that building while it really wasn't being used, $4 million. Walked away from those meetings very satisfied, thought I'd done a great job. We hear about the great programs that come there. I am a, I'm, I'm at the Civic Center pretty often. I enjoy the Civic Center. But this, to me, is really unconscionable that I, anyway, maybe I'm alone, I had no idea that we were this far behind in capital. Any business that operates sets money aside, because the air conditioner will break, the roof will need to be replaced, the carpeting needs, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Corporations do it, not-for-profits do it, and everybody in their home does it, but not the Civic Center. Now, we're going to ask the state for more money, because the Civic Center doesn't budget this way. In the meantime, the HRA tax was set up to support the Civic Center, and we have nickel and dime, and nickel and dime that HRA tax, now we're taking $2.3 million a year out of the HRA tax and putting it in places that have nothing to do with hotel, restaurant, and amusement. I'm, I'm, I'm very upset about this whole thing. I feel like I've been snookered, and, well, you, you say, no, we've never heard anything like this until just recently. So I will be voting for it, but I'm very upset about it, and I think the management of this very, very important community asset needs to be examined, and it seems to me that some changes there are warranted. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just concur with my colleagues on the other side of the room, at least. I'll get to you in a minute, counsel, no. I would just say that talking about the quality of life and the significance that the Civic Center holds to our community, as Councilman Euler said, if you were at the Civic Center on, on Sunday afternoon, you know exactly why it's there. I, I've told the story about my 14-year-old running onto the court, you know, and taking pictures with the Bradley players, that, that's what makes fans for life, and I can only imagine the thrill for those that are the hockey fans experiencing something like that as well. So I'm very excited to support this, to get the Civic Center polished up and moving forward for the next 40 years of its existence. I just think with what we just heard, it's important to look at something on the council communication. The hotel, restaurant, and amusement tax since 2016 has ranged between $9 and $11 million. When you look at the bond service, which is roughly $7 million, plus, as Councilman Kelly pointed out, the $2 million that goes to other agencies, you're only leaving the Civic Center with a million bucks to operate. So how in the world can they possibly set aside reserves when, when that's all they've got? They don't have the ability to, to tax. That's why we're issuing these bonds, because that, that's our responsibility. So if there's anyone to blame, I think this council needs to share as much of that responsibility as anybody else in this room. This is something that we're all in together. We value the significance that the Civic Center brings to our community, but clearly it doesn't come cheap, and we need to own up to that, and I will definitely be supporting this to get these bonds issued, to get these improvements made, and get that capital under control. Mr. Manager, I would just say, I know this isn't the time or the place for this discussion, but in 2029, when those bonds are paid off, there's going to be a significant amount of HRA dollars that will need to be reallocated. So whether it's some kind of an endowment, I don't know if we, we can't do an endowment as a public entity, but I think we need to look at ways to set those funds aside so that this doesn't happen again, so that we are prepared for the future and enabling the Civic Center Authority to, to operate. So that's not a discussion for tonight, but I certainly want to put that on all of our collective radar, that that's something that we will need to be addressing. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and I look forward to when this comes forward for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to hear from Councilmember Jensen, and then back to you, Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, the Civic Center is a huge asset, maybe one of the biggest, most important assets to the city and to downtown, and, and the Rivermen as well, and support issuing bonds for the ICE, whatever it's called, the ICE plant, and the improvements to the, to the Civic Center. But I do agree with Councilman Kelly, I have some concerns. I mean, when we increased the HRA tax, was it, I think it was about five years ago, when we, you know, we had a heated discussion about it and vote, and the purpose of increasing that tax was to make sure that the Civic Center had the money it needed for operating and some of the capital expenses, and here we are, instead of being asked to increase the HRA tax, we're being asked to issue bonds. So, and I'm okay with that, with issuing the bonds for the capital improvements, but I do have concerns what hasn't been discussed, which is part of this proposal, is to require us, the city, to guarantee a $1.2 million minimum floor in operating for the Civic Center. Now, that's doable when the HRA taxes are good. I think your projections are that if they continue to be good, an increase at 1% or 1.5% growth will have to pay $313,000 per year. But if they don't increase, if we have a bad year, or they're not as high as what's projected, we're going to be obligated for $5 million more dollars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the way that we looked at that from a sensitivity analysis standpoint was that let's assume that each year it declined 1% a year. So that's saying that from its current $10.6 million, that it shrunk 1% a year over the next six years, that, that the potential exposure for the city would be 5.5 million. Do I think that it's going to shrink 1 point, or 1% a year? I don't believe it will. I'm not sure it will grow 1% a year, but we'll have to, to look at where we are. I think that the more activities we have at the Civic Center, the more that we have events at the Civic Center, the more that we have people downtown spending money, that's going to draw more HRA tax dollars in, so that's the importance of that as well. So, so it's, I, I think we just wanted to show you that range of where that might be. I do still think where the city's current fiscal situation is, that we can sustain that, even if it was to decline 1% a year for the next six years.
But I guess to my other question, when we, when we increased the HRA tax, wasn't, we thought that that would cover the operating?
No, we increased the HRA tax, we went, the H tax was increased in 2015 from 6% to 8%, and that increase went to pay for road improvements in the city. So that's dollars that's not going directly-
Not HRA tax? I thought that was the property tax.
No, that was, that was a hotel tax increase in 2015 that went from 6% to 8%, and that 2%, that quarter of the HRA tax, the H tax, excuse me, is going to roads. And we, we, we transfer, that's the $700,000 that gets transferred into the road fund that's listed on the, the disbursement, and that would be the number four on the very first page of the council communication.
To, it says to the convention, oh, okay, I see. The $700,000 per year?
Correct.
Okay. So that was all that that was supposed to cover?
That was, that was when, when, when we adopted that in 2015, when council directed us, find ways that we could put more money towards our road network. We increased the H tax, we agreed to a, a property tax levy for roads of 1.2 million, and then we agreed that we would put $2 million of property taxes into debt service, and then the sales tax revenue that was pledged to that debt service would go towards roads. So that totaled, between all of that, roughly about a $3 million or a $4 million increase in our road funding back in 2015, and we've held that constant since that period of time.
Okay. I, I appreciate that explanation. I still, I will just reiterate, I do have concerns about obligating this council for, you know, 20 more years of a really high amount of debt. I mean, after we pay off the current debt service, then it's going to be our obligation will be $1.9 million every year.
The debt service will drop to 1.9 million, but you'll, that, you, you won't have, I mean, as we're anticipating it being 8 million, you're in essence going to have $6 million to, the council in 2029 will have to discuss what to do with that $6 million of HRA tax money, and where should that go at that point in time.
So I do, I will support it, but I, I just got to voice my, my deep concerns, especially about that additional $5.5 million for operating, which is a real possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been some great discussion here tonight, and I think that all of the comments are it's intrinsically valuable for the public, for the Civic Center Authority, and for our council to have heard those questions and those concerns. I think anytime that we've got a project this big in front of us, we should look at it from all aspects, and I think that that has, what has allowed us to be able to do this. For one, anytime that we obligate ourselves to bonds, I agree with Councilmember Jensen, we need to be concerned about how they get paid back. It's easy to be able to say something's, to be able to say the check is going to be delivered, but it's how those bills get paid. And so I, I think that that is a valuable question. City manager, I think that where you pointed out, that in 2029, we go from $7.7 million of debt service, really down to two, that frees up. It's going to be the responsibility of this council at that time to make sure that the concerns that we heard are taken in and that those are acted upon. So some great advice there. Councilman Kelly, I hear you, and I think the Civic Center Authority has had those same concerns. The, the people that work on the Civic Center Authority, and they're volunteers, they didn't make the formula to be able to have the ability of how many dollars are going to come to capital. They inherited that. They inherited a big job, because there were some delayed capital needs. But I will tell you that each and every person on there that is working on those capo, on the capital plan and has had work with the Civic Center devotes many, many hours to be, making sure that this is the crown jewel of, of Peoria and of central Illinois. And I, and I will guarantee you that that $4 million that you were very proud of to be able to help make sure that the Civic Center could survive COVID extremely was important. You played an important role. And your questions here tonight are also very important, because I, I think that the funding structure has created the gap in there, and it's a conversation that for a later time we will be able to have. Will this get us totally caught up? This gets a major part of the list. There will be some things on the list that will still need to come in, but it gives us some breathing room. Can't imagine where we would be without the Civic Center for downtown Peoria. And on the night that they took that vote, and people often refer to that meeting, some were here in person to be able to see it, some were not, but that had to be one of those moments in time where you decided what is right for the future. I'm glad they did. And we can go back over the past 20 years and figure out how we got here, but I'm glad of the council that we have here tonight, because the questions that I've gotten over the past week, week and a half, and weeks leading up to it, were not always easy questions. They were valued questions, and I think as a council, we were able to get to a really good solution. It doesn't take away the answers that we're going to need to answer in the future, but we've got two great partners. We've got the Peoria Rivermen, and we've got the Civic Center Authority, which by passing this, and tonight, we're going to ask for an ordinance to come back, and hopefully that will be voted on, so that the, the staff can be able to do their work, then those two entities can be able to meet and negotiate that lease. We want to keep the Rivermen here. It's the intention of- of what this $20 million is focused on. This conversation of being able to make sure the capital plant is there. We love the Civic Center. We've got some work to do. And so, I will make a motion that we ask staff to bring back an ordinance issuing $20 million in bonds that will be paid as laid out in our sheet with adding debt service through 2029 in the wraparound of $910,000 and going to 2030 of 1.935, so $1.1,935,000. This will be able to get us, have these bonds paid off by 2042. This is a good plan. It took a lot of work. Thank you, Councilmember Seer. Did not say that enough. Madam Mayor, for your work and for the work of every single person on this council that brought this forward. City Manager, to you and your staff, let's show our commitment to the Civic Center, to Peoria, and to the Rivermen tonight by having staff go back and do just a little bit more work for us so that the next council meeting, we can pass this ordinance. Thank you.
That motion is seconded by Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much to all my colleagues, especially Mr. Ruck Regal. I echo all of his sentiment, what he just said. It's very important to me that we all understand what can be accomplished when we work together as a team. I will not take the credit for this by myself. I would, it would be impossible to have this conversation tonight with our city manager who came up. Nobody knows, I always tell them, nobody knows the numbers better than our city managers. And so, thank you very much, Patrick, for all your work on this. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for the meeting, and the Councilman Ruck Regal to start this conversation going. This is a great plan. A lot of great things can be, can, will happen in the future. And to use a hockey analogy, I tell everybody that now we're now in the second period. And after this vote tonight, obviously, I'm asking all my colleagues to vote for it. And by the way, I have to say thank you to all my colleagues. I talked to them, we had some great conversation. We had some great questions. Hopefully, I was able to give you some good answers. But we did have, and everybody's been part of this, and I thank all of you, and hopefully, we'll have unanimous vote tonight. It'd be great. But it's important that people that are listening to us tonight, this was a team effort. And now, we're going to end the second period tonight, hopefully. And now, we're going to the third period, which means there's still a lot of work to do, but we will get there eventually. So, thank you for being here tonight, all of you. Thank you for all my colleagues, and hopefully, we'll finish the second period tonight. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. More discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarity, are the Rivermen, if there is a, will the ICE plant hold out for the 2023-2024 season, next year's season?
Maybe if I could ask a representative of the Civic Center Authority or Councilman Ruck Regal, do you want to maybe take that and talk about, the discussions that have been held about the ICE plant so far?
Councilmember Kelly tonight is full of great questions, and this is another one. And you know what? I'm glad you asked that because it's something that we have not touched upon yet. Yes, we will limp the ICE plant along. It has done really well on being able to support our Rivermen Hockey for a lot of years. We will get it through for one more year so that then we can come back in and put the proper plant in, and a new plant that, by the way, has the future coming on. Because, and I, we can geek out about R22 and all of these things. It will be the latest and greatest of ICE plants. That will be the proper ICE plant for the Civic Center today. But yes, we can limp along, and we will make that happen because that way, then we don't mess with their season, and we can replace the ICE plant at a timeframe that is workable for everybody.
Thank you. And I have another question. Is it proper to, for this motion to specify the dollar amounts rather than saying until 30, or I'm sorry, until '29, we're going with interest only and then through '42, principal and interest, rather than specifying the number?
I think that as we, as we work with our bond counsel and financial advisors and the bond underwriters, those numbers might change. So, if the principal amount is 20 million, I think that's, that's the, and then we'll work on the wraparound structure. I think the structure is doable. We've done it with other bonds and other debt that the city has issued, so.
Okay. You want to, thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Are you finished? And I'll go back to Councilman Ruck Regal.
Okay.
I think he wants to modify the language a little bit.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ruck Regal?
We'll do a friendly amendment to the ordinance, including interest only through 2029 and principal and interest after that point.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
23-061 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to receive and file a report back on the city's efforts related to housing quality and affordable housing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I'd like to do is turn the floor over to our Director of Community Development, Joe Dooland, to walk through the presentation. Ready, yes?
Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Councilman Riggenbach had asked us, I believe, a month and a half ago to provide a report back about the city's efforts as it relates to affordable housing and housing quality in our community. I didn't grab the, thank you, Paul. So, this presentation before you just goes over some of the city's direct efforts and what we do to support housing quality and affordable housing in our community, kind of the holistic approach the Community Development Department plays specifically with this topic, and kind of an overview of some of the things we've done over the last five years specifically related to housing quality in Peoria. So, specifically, what does affordable housing mean in Peoria? Affordable housing in Peoria really means that 30% of your gross monthly income is spent on housing. So, it doesn't really define necessarily an individual person or their income level. It just means what your overall spending of your monthly budget, if it's less than 30%, you're considered living in a situation that's affordable to you. If you're spending more than that, you're in a situation that's not affordable to you. So, in different parts of the country, there's a different definition of what affordable would mean. So, some of the often things you hear and correlated with affordable housing is market rate affordability. That's kind of what I just explained. Then, housing choice vouchers, which is often referred to as Section 8, public-based housing vouchers, where our projects specifically geared for those who make less than a certain income amount, and then their rent is specifically tied to that income amount versus just the market rate that's available. And public housing often in Peoria is Peoria Housing Authority. So, then just going a little deeper into that definition based on some of HUD's qualifications. So, when you hear extremely low income with housing, those are projects specifically geared for people who make less than 30% of AMI, area median income. And so, for a family of one, that's about $18,000 a year. For a family of four, that's about $27,000. And then, up on the PowerPoint is just then what your income would have to be for, to be affordable. So, a lot of in our project-based vouchers properties in the city of Peoria, your rent is specifically tied to this. So, you have to be at an income level to be at those properties. Because of that, your rent isn't set, so they don't advertise a set rent. It's specifically tied to 30% of your AMI. Often, because those are fully subsidized properties, they don't pay property taxes because they're a fully subsidized property through the federal government. And then, low income, that's a lot of the programs that the city offers. That's 80% of AMI. So, for a family of four, that can go up to $68,750. A lot of the affordable housing tax credit projects we have in our community, 80% is their max to let someone live at the property. And then, their rent is essentially, cannot go over a certain amount, but it's really set at those market rents because, as you can see, where the 30% falls is traditionally lower than the rent that gets charged in our community. The last kind of slide about this specific topic is fair market rents in Peoria. This is what the Housing Authority uses to set Section 8 vouchers, and it's based on kind of the average net income of properties throughout our community. So, in Peoria, fair market rent for a one-bedroom is $707, two-bedroom, $896, and three-bedroom, $1,164. So, that's, if you go through the housing voucher system, that's the rent you would pay as well. So, that's kind of the overview of kind of affordable housing. I think the thing I want to really drive home of, Councilman Grabb often reminds me the role community development and code enforcement plays in public safety. So, during budget times, we hear a lot about public safety entities, and housing is a huge part of that public safety. Multiple studies show that good, quality housing reduces gun violence. It improves health equity issues in our community. Housing is a very vital, key thing to our community, and I believe our community development staff has done a fantastic job over the last five to 10 years of really focusing all of our efforts related to housing. Our staff has done a great job of buying into this notion that they all play a role in improving housing quality and thus making it more affordable in our community. So, the next part of the slide, the presentation, is going to kind of hit on three main things. Improving housing in Peoria, our focus on individuals and families experiencing homelessness, and our affordable housing project support. So, the main thing we do about improving housing in the city of Peoria is our code enforcement work. I think, you know, our code enforcement staff, you often think of being out in the community, making sure that grass gets cut, litter gets removed, things like that, and they do a fantastic job with that. But one of the things that often goes unnoticed is the, really the role they play in improving the housing conditions of our residents. And over, since 2018, they have started about 4,779 housing cases in our community. Of those, we have brought into compliance about 3,000 of them. About 1,200 have defaulted, and we currently have about 484 that work through our system. That number stays about pretty stagnant, where we get some drop off because we get compliance, and then we're starting new constantly. Really appreciate all of the work that our legal department does to support us. I think, you know, when we talk about code enforcement and we talk about the emphasis and value that they have, we often forget about the backend office and the work the legal department does to help us with this. Not only do they administer the court process for us, but they've really been working with our land bank and our demo court process really to improve a lot of the things we're trying to do in our community. So, the code enforcement staff does a fantastic job. I know we often during budget time or other times talk about how we wish we had more proactive rental inspections in our community. I understand the value that that would play, but I think we've done a lot to kind of make sure that, while we don't have proactive rental inspections, so we're not in rental property every day and proactively looking at them, we've done an excellent job of making fantastic relationships in the community with Perry State Legal Services, with other nonprofit agencies who do a fantastic job of vouching for staff. So, they make those connections to tenants. They say, we understand that, you know, if you call the city, they're going to make sure your landlord doesn't retaliate against you. Please let them know when there's a violation. Our local media has actually done a really good job of letting us know, getting our message out to tenants that if you have a code enforcement issue, please let your landlord know, but if they don't fix it, reach out to staff. So, it really has supplemented very well our efforts of not having a proactive rental inspection program to ensure that we still get in these bad properties, and we can specifically focus on the ones that are causing the issues instead of spending a lot of time in the properties that aren't causing the issues. The next kind of tool in our, in our chest to really focus on housing quality is our work with the land bank. You know, the land bank was started about two years ago in the city of Peoria through a grant through the Illinois Housing Development Authority. It's very important for us, when we started that, to be able to do it on our own terms. Often, when we're talking to other communities and we've talked to other leading experts in these fields, one of the things that I'm really impressed that Peoria does is that we take this holistic approach in every aspect of housing. So, whether it's code enforcement, the land bank, our grants division, our planners, it really is a team effort focusing on housing. And I think the land bank strategy that we've created has really taken that a step forward. One of the best things the land bank can do is to remove properties that should never be rented, thus eliminating poor housing quality stock from our community. I think last year with your guidance, we were able to remove about 85 houses from the county auction process that had we not done, I'm very certain would have been sold for $700, and a large majority of those have been rented out, where almost all of them need demolished. So, I think it's very important to highlight the work our land bank is doing. You know, even before our land bank, we focused on demolitions. In the last five years, we've demolished about 308 structures in the city of Peoria. Over the next two years, we'll probably do about 200 more with our American Rescue Plan money. We've been able to acquire about 335 properties. The land bank has been very successful in transferring lots to neighbors when they meet insert criteria, so we don't have to cut those properties anymore. And then, we've been able to take those properties when there can be rehab to really get them out to people who can rehab and fix them, and also provide some vacant lots for Habitat for Humanity, for Peoria Opportunities Foundation, to build new construction and new affordable housing on them. The next focus that we do to improve housing quality in Peoria is kind of our direct assistance to housing improvements in our community. I think earlier when we approved the roofing program through the Illinois Housing Development Authority, we touched on this a little bit. But since 2018, we've been able to repair 108 roofs for our residents in Peoria. We have an emergency repair program that's available year-round. That really focuses on hot water heaters and furnaces to ensure that properties don't become uninhabitable. So, if you do meet our income requirements, you can always call our office, and we'll get out there. As long as the repair is less than $5,000 and you meet those requirements, we can help fix that issue for you. In addition, we have a ramp program available for ADA accessibility to ensure people can stay in their house if they need a ramp. And then, in the East Village Gross Cell specifically, since 2018, we've been able to do 36 matching grants to properties who made repairs to the exterior of their properties. In addition, since 2022, so not that long, but we've, through the American Rescue Plan money, been able to allocate 28 grants for down payment assistance programs. The important thing to note with those are they're only available in all qualified census tracts. So, that's essentially the area south of McClear, our older neighborhoods. We've been able to encourage and help 28 property owners become homeowners in that area, and that program will be available in 2023 and 2024 as well. So, we'll hopefully continue to drive up that number. In addition, one other big aspect in affordable housing is making sure that your daily expenses are also affordable. We saw during COVID, when people lost income and a lot of things that were happening that were detrimental to our community, we used our federal funding to really step in and help people with some of those bill payments. In 2020 specifically, we helped 58 households with rental assistance. This was before the Illinois Housing Development Authority launched their rental assistance program. So, we quickly pivoted once they launched their program and got people to apply for the state program, and we could focus our funds elsewhere. And then, the next year, 2021, we used those COVID money to help 133 households with utility assistance. And then, at the end of last year, during the budget time, we talked about switching some of our programs to provide utility assistance for our residents this year due to escalating costs. And we currently have 279 residents in that program that get a monthly stipend for four months to help with their utility bills as well. The last kind of major grant and program that we have available is our rehousing program. Often, one of the, four or five years ago, the critique we heard is people are afraid to call the city of Peoria because they don't want their landlord to retaliate them. So, if it's not their fault, they call us. We go out, we find code violations, we post the property uninhabitable, now they're homeless. So, they were reluctant to call us. So, we launched a rehousing program. If you remember correctly, I believe it was 1505 Pennsylvania Terrace, there was a large apartment complex that had a multitude of code violations. Kristi Kaposko with our legal department worked very well with me to ensure that that property owner paid the fine that was allocated to the city of Peoria. They paid $50,000 that specifically went to launch this rehousing program. And then, we set up the process to kind of fund the program with itself, with criminal housing management tickets and other citations we write, so the program continues to have funding for it. What this allows for our residents, when their property is posted uninhabitable and it's because of no fault of their own, it's something the tenant isn't, I mean, the landlord isn't fixing, we start this program, they can get some rental assistance for security deposit, moving expenses. We try to connect- We try to connect them with landlords that are in our community. So really people don't feel threatened by their landlord and fear if they let us know they'll be homeless. One of the reasons the program was specifically launched was because we heard some feedback from our nonprofit community that they also have programs like this available, but the thing that they can't do is go after and recoup the cost from the landlords when this happens. So by the city having this program, if a tenant is involved, we bill the landlord for the program and go after those costs associated for the rehousing as well. In addition to the programs that we specifically administer, we also from time to time provide a funding to other nonprofit organizations to provide housing assistance as well. So over the last five years, we've had a very successful lead match program with our health department. They've got federal funding to remediate lead in properties where children test have high blood levels, elevated levels for lead poisoning. We provided TIF funds to PCCO for their Federal Home Loan Bank program. We provided funds for Phoenix Community Development Services for their Federal Home Loan Bank program and provided funding in the past for rebuilding together. So the next piece I'm going to go into is kind of our outreach and our role in assisting families dealing with and experiencing homelessness. I wanted to make sure though to drive home the point that that our role with this is much more of a supportive role than leading the efforts. The city of Peoria is a member of the Continue of Care led by Kate Green, who is, it's a multitude of many nonprofits in our community who know much more about these issues than I do. So we really rely on their expertise to help make the decisions and guide us with a lot of the things going in our, in our community. The city does receive $150,000 each year in emergency solutions grants that specifically go towards the nonprofits. We're really the pass through to get this money out to those nonprofits that are delivering the work. In addition, last year, the city of Peoria hired a housing coordinator to specifically work with our nonprofit partners. The program that we, I discussed earlier, the rehousing program she administers, she makes a lot of great connections with landlords, tenants in our community and really works as that direct liaison to a multitude of different people to really focus on housing for our community. So some of the other things that we've done to support the efforts of our nonprofit community, we provide funding through our nonprofit capital grant for our Dream Center renovations. We use some of the additional allocation we got from COVID for emergency solutions grant for renovations, the Dream Center, Salvation Army, Center for Prevention of Abuse. And then our annual, that $150,000 I talked about goes to shelter operations and rapid rehousing. So really, as I said, our role with, with support for our homeless population is really relying on our experts in the community to help guide our decision-making. They do a fantastic job. Often when we get calls about whether it's an encampment or someone loitering at a property that someone feels they might be homelessness, you know, the first call isn't necessarily going to be to the police department or our fire department. We often call our, Phoenix Community Development Services has a fantastic street outreach team. We make that connection to them. They go out, they introduce themselves, they try to connect them directly to housing, they let them know that there's space in our shelters that, that they can stay in and really try to ensure that that person has the resources, they, they know about the resources that we have in our community. And they're really that first step to really work on that, getting that person housed. The last subject I'm going to talk about is kind of our role with supporting affordable housing projects in Peoria, and I want to highlight kind of the ones we've supported over the years. So the city of Peoria, being an entitlement community with HUD, receives an annual allocation of CDBG and home funds that specifically have to be used to benefit low income people and our home funds have to be specifically go towards housing projects. In addition, our, one of the other things our city does that's pretty unique is we waive all building permit fees for housing projects that serve residents at 80% of AMI. And in addition, as I mentioned, the land bank's work in acquiring properties and trying to get those to support supportive housing. Some of the past and current efforts of projects that have come to fruition in the city of Peoria. East Bluff Housing Service, East Bluff Housing was a Peoria Opportunities Foundation tax credit that they built new housing in the East Bluff. Habitat for Humanity has built a significant amount of properties over the last five to 10 years in Peoria that really promoted homeownership in our community. Parkwood Commons was completely renovated by Wallet Communities. And then Madison 1, 2, and 3 is a Phoenix Community Development Services. We recently approved funding for Madison 3. And in addition, we provided funding for their workforce development center there where they're specifically creating office spaces that go to job training and will eventually open a coffee shop and cafe to help job training for, as part of their permanent supportive housing. The last three projects on your list are projects that were just recently submitted to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for housing tax credits, so we're very hopeful that they get funded. The first one is the redevelopment of the old Methodist College. That's permanent supportive housing for families experiencing homelessness. And then the last two were the Peoria Opportunities Pivotal Housing Projects that were submitted in 61605. I think the main thing to understand the city's role in affordable housing projects is you're talking about projects that often come with price tags of 10, 12, 15 million dollars. We aren't ever coming to, no one is coming to the city council and asking for us to fund those programs. The city just doesn't have the means to do that. So often the funding that we do provide is that home fund, home funds from the federal government that directly have to be used for projects like that. And we usually see how we can get the most housing units, the best projects, the best return on investment for our community. And that's really the role we play in trying to get more affordable housing projects. And I think the, the work our land bank has done to acquire and demo more property in the city of Peoria, I think more and more over the next few years, we're going to see more and more and more companies coming to the city of Peoria who want to do affordable housing projects. So it's very exciting and I think they play a huge key role in providing tenants a safe place to live. But with that, we, from our discussions at our previous meeting, I don't want to undersell how valuable we also understand homeownership is in our community. That's why we have, you know, put money in the down payment assistance program. That's why we have those housing rehab programs specifically for homeowners. And that's why we continue to work with Habitat on their affordable housing projects as well that are specifically geared towards homeownership. The last thing I want to talk about before I open up for questions, the city of Peoria does have a housing commission. The housing commission was reformed, if you remember correctly, it used to be part of the Fair Housing Commission and Fair Employment Commission, then they were combined and then separated. So now we have a housing commission that started meeting in April 2022 more regularly. They're currently working on a comprehensive housing strategy specifically around fair and affordable housing that you will see in the future that specifically highlights a lot of things we talked about today and really lays out a strategic vision for housing in Peoria over the next few years. So as that's created, we'll make sure to keep council in loop and bring that back for feedback, but that's what the housing commission is currently working on. So with that, happy to answer any questions on the, all of the work our staff does and really appreciate all the work the community development staff does. We have a fantastic staff who really believes in the mission of being a public servant and housing is a huge piece of that.
Thank you, Director Doolin. Great presentation. Questions for our Director of Community Development? Oh, is something not working here? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Director Doolin, for a very comprehensive overview of this topic. And before we get too far into the questions, I want to make sure we recognize Catherine Murphy, who's also here. Catherine's the one responsible for all these grants that we're approving. For instance, the Roof Repair Program and her and her team really do a yeoman's job in making Peoria aware of those opportunities and getting those for us. So Catherine, thank you very much. Really spurred my desire to have this discussion with council was the experience we had with the Darwin Homes and SFR 3 right before Christmas time. As you recall, this property manager was issuing notices to vacate right before Christmas time and Director Doolin and his staff went to bed immediately after that council meeting. I remember that first council meeting in December clearly and reached out to Darwin, got a 30-day extension and has continued to work with them and established that dialogue. So Director Doolin, if you could just highlight a little bit about Nicole Morrow's role in that, our housing coordinator, and that as you recall is a position we established just about a year ago, wasn't it? So could you tell us what, specifically what her actions were in regards to the Darwin and how she reached out to folks?
Yes, sir. So, you know, if you remember, Darwin Homes is the property management company for a company, SFR 3, which is a national company that owns about 14,000 properties across the United States. Back in December, they completed some purchases and had a very large portfolio of about 59 properties that they were taking action against. And the timing couldn't have been worse for a lot of families who lived paycheck to paycheck and had been in properties for a long time. They issued a 30-day notice to vacate, which was legally within their right in the state of Illinois, but, but I think we can all acknowledge that the timing was terrible and it probably wasn't the right thing to do from a humanitarian standpoint. Darwin Homes as the property manager was not very easily, easy to get in touch with or communicate with. So we reached out directly to SFR 3. We were able to get in contact with their kind of Midwest Director of Properties and I explained the situation and nicely asked if he would give our residents a 30-day extension and explain to him owning property in Peoria comes with wanting to have a positive relationship with the city of Peoria and this would go a long way in extending that positive relationship with the city of Peoria. They were actually very amenable to that. They saw the timing was very poorly. It was a poor reflection of their company, not what they wanted to do. So they offered an extension of 30 days to all the residents who were affected by this. While a large majority of those 59 properties were in the East Bluff, they were all not, all not located in the East Bluff. In fact, some of them were not even located in the city of Peoria, but SFR 3 extended the 30-day notice to all properties that were given that notice for 30 days. At that point, three of our staff members, including Nicole, reached out to all of the property, the tenants affected and let them know this should be coming. You'll have 30 days, an extension. Please let us know if you have any questions or need connections to landlords so we can try to make you a bad situation a little less bad. At the end of the day, they still were going to have to leave the property if that's what the property owner desired, but we wanted to do everything we could to ensure that they had the, the right tools to kind of get to a better spot. In addition to that, we reached out to Prairie State Legal Services who also shared the same feeling we did. While it was legal what they did, we wanted to make sure that the tenants, they were still following the legal process. So Prairie State Legal Services hosted a webinar in conjunction with us that we put up on the city of, of Peoria's website. We reached out to them. Throughout this process, about 21 of the tenants contacted them for legal advice. About 18 of them reached out to the city for, for assistance of what we could do to help. We made various connections to landlords that we have a list from, from other things. We connected them with 2-on-1 and made a multitude of different referrals. In addition, we talked to the Salvation Army who had some rapid rehousing money available and we were able to make six direct connections for the Salvation Army to provide direct assistance for deposits and first month rents for six of the tenants as well. So it wasn't still the ideal situation for a lot of people who've been in properties for a very long time and were asked to move, but, you know, I think our staff really reacted well to try to ensure that it was mediated as best and legally as best as we could with, with what we could control.
Well, I certainly appreciate the efforts personally, and I know many of the residents in, in the East Bluff in particular have, have reached out to me, appreciate it. So we want to recognize those efforts because we, we hear complaints oftentimes, so when we can hear the opposite, that's always appreciated. I just want to point out two things and then I'll, I'll stop. Page 10, I think, the grant again is, is an incredible resource for our community and really helps the homeowners who perhaps are struggling with the affordable aspect of their housing. And I would just proudly point out that East Village Growth Cell TIF since inception in 2016 has put over 50 homeowners in touch with $500,000. So that's been a great success. And this year, as, as we move forward into the programming, we really would like to see some down payment assistance coincide with some of those housing rehab. So maybe we can get somebody to buy a new house in the East Bluff, help them with the down payment assistance and then they can also afford themselves of the rehab program. So there's a lot of exciting opportunities out there and I think it all begins with, with the people experiencing homelessness on the streets, you know, the, the emergency shelters we have at Dream Center and Salvation Army and then what's going to be happening at the old Methodist, hopefully some, some good stuff. So thank you again, Director Doolin, for a very thorough overview of, of what the city is doing to help on this matter. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Indeed. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great report, comprehensive, and I think it really does show the totality of, of the issues that you were facing and, and working with your department from homelessness, whether that be the Continue of Care all the way through. Question that I'm maybe not seeing or maybe I'm overlooking here, how many units right now are we missing in both the rental side and maybe the homeownership side in the city? If we were to plan, what, what's the number that we're looking for in both those categories?
I don't have that, but we can get back to you guys with that.
That'd be great. And I, I think that that would be an important number just as we're sort of planning and finding out, you know, where we want to go with this as well. This is an amazing report. Thank you for this.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Definitely a great report. Director Doolin, as a member of the Continue of Care, do you possibly know what percentage of our population is unhoused?
That's an excellent question because I just asked Catherine. Approximately, during the point in time contact, which happened about two weeks ago, I think we're a little over 400 residents that were experiencing homelessness in Peoria with 39 of those unsheltered.
So I think as we, you know, look to move forward and determine what our role in is addressing that, it's just determining what is our role in trying to reduce that moving forward and then allocate appropriately because we definitely want to address and provide shelter and make sure that our unhoused population is provided with resources. Thank you.
Just, just to add that, to that, I think one of the, the key numbers from, from, and we'll be getting a report back to you on, on that information, but it was just conducted about two weeks ago, is that there was a slight increase in the number of, of people in our shelters, but the number of unsheltered residents, so those during the time that were on the street was 39 last year and 39 this year. So we're not seeing that number increase, which I think is a positive sign for our community and speaks very highly of, of the work that all of our nonprofits do in our community to, to really connect people to shelters and, and housing. You know, during, during the winter, maybe whenever we had the very cold snaps, our staff did, our staff did a fantastic job working with the nonprofit community to ensure updates on the capacity that was going on in our shelters around town. And while I think most shelters would tell you they are full, I think what they would also tell you is they don't turn people away and they work really well together to connect residents who might show up, who might not fit the demographic of their shelter, whether it's families, things like that. And they do an excellent job connecting them. So during those months, even, even our shelters, they weren't turning anyone away. So while our shelters are full and there's probably some capacity issues, they do not turn people away and try to provide as much resources as possible.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Doolin, for the report. I thought it was, as, it was very comprehensive. One minor item on slide number eight. We've had 4,700 housing cases since 2018. 2,900 are in compliance, which is great. 1,201 defaulted. I don't understand that. What does that mean and what are, what are the ramifications of that?
Yes, so when a property is, code violations are noticed, the, the code Yes. So when a property is, code violations are noticed, the code defines how we set a property through that process. So we have to notify them, they have to hopefully show up, and then make the repairs. So if they don't make the repairs, or they don't show up, that is considered defaulted. And then, at that point, we kind of decide where we go from there. So if the property is minor violations, we often re-enter that process and go through them. Or if it's a property that kind of peters on the edge of demolition, we'll start it with demolition court. I think that is one of the things that council asks us to look at for 2023 and 2024, specifically addresses this issue and what we can do. And so we've been working with Corporation Counsel and his staff on planning for the future with some of those defaults, about doing some memory judgments, filing some liens against property owners, how we can take that 1,200, not with the goal of recouping those fines that we put in place, but really getting them to show up and just really fix the houses.
Thank you for that. And once, as I've done before, I'd like to compliment you on, first of all, the deal with the county, on getting into the auction early. And secondly, the really very innovative program where a house that's on the bubble can be acquired by somebody, and if they do, the amount of work that we have set aside for demolition, to our satisfaction, will give them that money. And, you know, I think those are both very, very innovative. I appreciate that. And the committee will pick up again after the election. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Doolin, for your report. I just had one question about page six, just the data. Does it always, and it says it's the rates established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, does this consider the entire Peoria area, including distressed communities?
Are you talking about the fair market rents?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a community average.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I mean, I think unfortunately, often you find in more distressed areas, rent is not reflective of the housing conditions, unfortunately.
And that, that was what I was kind of trying to get to. Sometimes in areas, people are paying rent for something that they wouldn't pay the same amount for in another area, just because of, you know, a lot of factors. And sometimes, you know, you find out that, well, they shouldn't be paying what they're paying because of where they're living. And so that's why I was kind of wondering if it considered all of those factors.
Yeah, and I think that's why the first part, when we talk about the efforts of the code enforcement department, because Peoria is a very affordable housing community, but, but our mission and goal is to really improve the quality of that affordable housing and the work they're doing, because you're absolutely right, that, that often when, when people are faced with situations where they're, the housing is the last resort, because they might have bad credit, they might have a record, they just might not have the wages to afford something better, there are property owners who take advantage of that and charge unfortunate rents, which is why we really need to continue to focus on improving the quality. And when new units come on, you often see those get rented up because there's, they're better, and they're the higher quality.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you again, Director Doolin, for your leadership. Thank you, Ms. Murphy, and the entire team within community development. Much appreciated. Can I get a motion to receive and file, moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal? Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
23-062 is a communication from the city manager and fire chief with a request to create a program establishing and implementing a system working with insurance companies to collect fire recovery fees within insurance policies for services rendered by the Peoria Fire Department.
Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Chief Solberger to come up and talk about this program. I know that we have representatives of Local 50 here as well, and I'll turn the floor over to him to talk about this program.
We're constantly challenged throughout time, basically trying to come up with creative ways to generate revenue throughout the city. We all know that inherently, that's a little difficult for the fire department. That being said, working with Josh Martin and Peoria Fire Fighters Local 50, we started these discussions in the fall. This is not a new talking point. I believe that this was explored in 2019. As I accurately relayed this information to all the councilors, as we presented this to you, it was a really short timeframe. We didn't have the ability during 2019 to fully vet this, have a better understanding of how it works, how can we answer all the questions, what are the potential pitfalls to the community and the taxpayers. So as Josh and I worked through this with one particular TPA, we felt like we had the ability to answer most of these questions. And so as we presented this to all of you individually, we feel like we had a better understanding to be able to vet this, answer questions, concerns. We also had the ability, I had one local insurance agent reach out, had a great conversation with him, answered those questions as well. So we felt like giving this time and kind of slowing the roll a little bit, we have a better understanding of what we're potentially getting into.
And I think it's, if it's okay for me to interject as well, that I think this is a systematic approach. And I think I accurately relayed this to everyone as well. This is phase one. So phase one is agreeing to the concept. And then if we agree to this tonight, then it's me working with finance and purchasing and legal, going through the RFP process, bringing more information back to you. And then the final phase of that is creating an ordinance to be considered by council.
Just wanted to highlight, thank you, Chief Solberger. I wanted to highlight that last page where you indicate that there are over 150 communities in Illinois that currently use this fire recovery. These include Huntley, Fire Protection District, DeKalb, the city of Elgin, Lockport Township, Morris, city of Kankakee, Joliet, and Rockford, to name just a few of those. So we're opening for questions. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I know the answer, but I'd like you to tell us, if this goes through, where do these funds end up, these recovery funds?
End up, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, but they would end up in the general fund?
Thank you. And is there a, I'm not looking at it right now, is there a motion necessary to receive and file, or?
Is it receive and file, or is it motion to proceed?
Yeah, to go ahead and proceed. I so moved.
Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. More discussion. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been a huge proponent of this for a number of years, so I'm glad to see we're finally going to actually do it. So it's a great idea, and I think a lot of other municipalities are doing it, and it will help us get some fees for the services the fire department's providing to entities that, you know, are covered by insurance, and that I think we should proceed, and I hope the whole council will support it. And the sooner we get it done, the better. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate you bringing this forth, Chief, and the rest of your team. Just for the public, just to ask a couple clarifying questions that I already know the answers to, but I think it's good for our listeners to have the answers. If someone doesn't have insurance, what would be the offense of trying to collect that? Would the city go after them civically, or what would that look like?
That would not happen. As I accurately relayed to each of you as we presented this, I am that filter. So as we provide information to that TPA, if the information comes back to us from whoever we end up using, and we find out that this person or persons do not have insurance, then we do not proceed forward. There will be no taxpayer receiving a bill.
And this would be applicable to anyone that's within the city of Peoria. So not just Peoria residents, but if you're passing through, you get into an accident, and you require our fire services, you would essentially contact their insurance for payment.
That's correct. And so to answer that accurately, we currently do that right now in regards to car accidents. Anybody who lives outside of the city and they're involved in a car accident here requires our services. We do bill for that already. And so I think it's important to mention as well, whoever we end up working with through this process, once the RFP goes through, we create the ordinance. There's other facets to this that intrigue me even more so as the fire chief. We get called for mutual aid all of the time, whether that's for our paramedics in providing ALS services, or a really good example is bioerja, and I brought this up to all of you guys individually in the presentation. I know that I challenge myself to do the best of my ability to be able to recapture funds, quantify overtime, lost equipment. But I know for a fact, for lack of a better phrase, that I left money on the table. And so what this potentially does is that we're bringing in experts that are in this field of work every single day, and then we can lean on them and we can do to the best of our ability for the Peoria community.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted to thank especially Josh Martin and the chief and the department for continuing to pursue this. I know it's probably frustrating at times when the governing body rejects an idea when it comes to the floor, but you've continued to dig into this to get it right and make sure it was something that we can pass, that we can all support. So I appreciate the continued effort to find ways to make sure that we can be better leaders in running the city and collecting the revenue that's out there so that we can continue to provide services to the taxpayers. So thank you and your department for the effort.
Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to echo those sentiments, both to, both to you and to Josh Martin. For, this is the kind of thinking that we need to be able to, to help fill those gaps that we have. And we've talked about this for a long time, and I think this is a very interesting program that you both have studied and brought forward to us. Question on that, do you envision like a certain start date? How would this work if, if an ordinance is passed and it would go into implementation?
I'd like to get going on this as soon as we possibly can. But to be able to answer that as accurately as possible, I'd love to be able to explore the possibility of looking at 2022 incidents with whatever TPA we end up using, and how can, how that can fall in line with the ordinance and state laws and things like that. So I would love to be able to explore the possibility of that and see what that looks like.
And again, for our listening public, that doesn't mean that people are going to be getting a bill. It just means that if, if this insurance side would be available, that that would be done. But, but there's no bill that's being sent for any sort of previous activity.
That's correct. And I think what I'm just as excited about is being able to bring this back to you with even more knowledge and more education on how this process works. But we know that it's legal, we know that it's possible, and we'd just love to be able to explore on this and create a program.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor to create this program to collect fire recovery fees with insurance policies for services rendered by the Peoria Fire Department. Any additional discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
23-063 is a communication from the city manager with requests for the following: A, approve a real estate transfer for 3917 Southwest Adams Street, Peoria, Illinois, 61605, and B, approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria, Pleasure Driveway, and Peoria Park District.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be very brief, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Jackson if I could, right after that. Very pleased that we have this item in front of you this evening. This is a two-part item. The first is that we're asking to acquire a parcel of property at 3917 Southwest Adams, and we'll go into that, the reason for that, in just a moment. And then, second, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the Peoria Park District on the maintenance of this site when it gets finished and, and put together. But I'd like to turn, if I could, to Councilwoman Jackson to introduce the special guest we have here this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Well, I, I'm excited. I, before, let me, before I get started, I would be remiss if I would not thank Mr. Bob Hofer's wife, because this, this historic project probably would not be here before us tonight if it were not her expressing interest in finding the gravesite of one of her relatives. And that led to just a remarkable discovery here, a remarkable historic discovery in our city. And with that, I'd like to bring Mr. Bob Hofer up to tell us a little bit about this great piece of history here in our city.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the introduction and the opportunity to share this story with you. I, first of all, feel both privileged and humbled to be on this busy agenda, and I will do my best to help you and not stand very long between you and the next item, at least. Also want to commend and thank every one of you around this horseshoe for working as hard as you do for our community in governing the affairs of this city. Anyone who thinks that governance work is easy work has never done it. This has been a very interesting project, and I want to first introduce to you those who came with me this evening. And as Councilmember Jackson mentioned, my wife Evelyn is here. This is because her family has been directly affected by this story. Also with me is Steve Peterson, who is the head of the local roofers union here in Peoria, who has been involved in graciously donating a piece of property to the city that will form the basis for something we're calling Freedom and Remembrance Memorial. And I'll tell you more about that as we go. And many in the gallery may not have heard much about this, other than what's been in the press and so on. But I know that all of you have some briefing materials on that. Also with me tonight is Bill Corman. He's a member of our Little Six Guy team that has worked on this thing for several years. And he is our media guy that takes care of our Facebook pages and websites and so on. But to begin, Peoria, all of you know, has a long, long history. And it also has a lot of forgotten mysteries. And one of them is this old lost cemetery down on the south end. 200 years ago, this June, a Moffett family, they were pioneer settlers here, arrived from Ohio. The men had been here the year before in '22 and scoped out Peoria as a place to live. And so this begins a 200-year story. And I'm going to quickly try and walk you through that. I know you've seen it, many of you have seen the materials, but I'll quickly do it. They started, they came here to Peoria, started mining and milling businesses, and all four of them, the Captain Joseph and his three sons served in the Black Hawk War in 1832. And in 1833, Akela Moffett came back to Peoria, built a beautiful house down at that time on South Adams. In fact, it's, the address, turns out that it was 3917. In 1836, he received a large rent grant, land grant, and that was to develop South Peoria. And he and others began to do that. And fast forward 30 years to 1865, after the Civil War, he set aside some more of his property, and he called it Union Cemetery. And the idea was to provide low-cost or no-cost burials for the Union members, the soldiers that had come back home. Fast forward 10 years, and in the 1870s, he sold that property, along with an old family burying ground that he had on the, on the property down there, to two investors. And this piece of property was kind of like a bowtie shape, and it touched both Griswold and Adams Streets. Business really boomed from 1874 for about 30 years. And then in 1905, the city health department and the city council ordered the cemetery to be closed. Unfortunately, the owners abandoned it, and it became a dumping ground and a South Side eyesore. 50 years later, court actions gathered the rights to all of the shares of the Moffett Cemetery Association. The burial records were said to have been The burial records were said to have been lost, and everyone there was said to have been moved. Grave stones that were still left, the trees and all of the brush on the site were cleared off. The city rezoned all of that property to light industrial, and the parcels were sold to Kroger and Consolidated Freeway in the mid-'50s. Fast-forward 60 years. 2015, my wife Evelyn asked me, where in the world is my great-grandfather buried? In Peoria. No one seems to know. Family lore said that he died on the steps of the Swedish Lutheran Church on Christmas morning. Well, that began a long process, and I got one clue that turned out to be the thing that made all the difference in the world, and that was a clue about the possibility of some old records. So in 2016, we were finally able to find these old records. They were undertaker reports that were made every month by all of the undertakers around here, and they covered the years 1872 through 1915, which more than covered, or did cover, most of the Moffett Cemetery activity down there at that time. All of the pages of these old books were photographed, and then they were transcribed by members of the Peoria County Genealogical Society into databases, and they now have produced bound volumes that are for sale, and they're making them available to libraries around the country. These old records were the death and burial record for 32,000 people in Peoria. And in some cases, we think that they are the only death and burial record for perhaps 3,500 people to 4,000 people. 2,500 of these records were for this little cemetery down there alone. They had said that all of the records were lost, and I think that may well be the case, that the Cemetery Association records were lost. But thank heaven for the records that were found. Two hundred more buried there were found. And also in 2016, we identified that there were, at that time, we knew of 48 Union Civil War veterans that were buried there, including one by the name of Nathan Ashby. He was in the United States Colored Troops. He was, came from Pekin. He joined the Union forces, and he was actually at the original Juneteenth in Galveston, Texas in 1865. In 2017, we held a ceremony down on the site, or very close to the site, for the veterans. It was a temporary memorial we put up. It was a vinyl. Maybe over the years, you've seen it down there. All of the names were read aloud, and we figured that was probably the first time in 150 years those names had been spoken. Thirteen Civil War reenactors were there. Battle Hymn of the Republic was sung. Readings were done. A flower for each of the 48 was carried forward and put into a vase as their name was read. Rifle salutes for the reenactors and also for our local American Legion Post Two. In 2018, we discovered that there were others buried there, other veterans. One was from the Spanish-American War. He was Akela Moffett's nephew. One was from the War of 1812. His father was in the Revolution. There was also a man there, buried there now, that was in the 1792 Virginia militia. His father and his father-in-law both served in the Revolutionary War. Akela Moffett, the owner of this property, in the days before, his grandfather served in the Revolution, as did two of his great uncles, and six of his cousins were in the Revolution. One of the individuals buried there at Moffett was a guy by the name of Jesse Boone Holliday. His father was in the War of 1812. His grandfather was in the Revolutionary War, and his great-grandfather was Daniel Boone. And he's buried down there in South Peoria. In 2019, we made a major find, and that was Nancy Leggins Costley, the first African-American freed by actions of Abraham Lincoln, a young attorney in 1841, when he won an Illinois State Supreme Court case that freed her and her three children. Lincoln enthusiasts really took off after this was found, and things really began to heat up. So we formed a local team. There are six of us in total, local history enthusiasts, were sometimes called the Men of Moffett. I'm not sure why. Now, also in 2019, the Nancy story went national, and it appeared in over 150 newspapers across the country. For two weeks, I got phone calls from border to border and coast to coast about this. This was an article that Phil Luciano wrote. Many of you may have seen it. The state of Illinois and the Lincoln enthusiasts around Illinois and around the country got really excited about this at that time. And also in 2020, then, the local interests finally started to build. Historical Society, the Riverfront Museum, the Genealogy Societies, all kinds of things started happening with memorial ideas and renderings for possible sites at this little place in the South Side of Peoria. The Roofers Union in 2020 agreed to donate the land, and this site that they are donating is on the original site of the Akela Moffett homestead. It's not on the old cemetery grounds, but it is very near, and that's an emotional element of the reason that we're asking for the city to take over this piece of property that's being donated. In 2021, the Illinois State Historical Society became our strategic partner. State organizations started to line up. National interests really started to take off. Grants for the markers and other things that we're going to put at the memorial site began to come in. 2022, the funds are all raised, and in-kind donations have been committed. So there'll be three large markers that are over four feet square that will be erected there, a 25-foot solar-lighted flagpole, and a storyboard that will tell additional information. One of the markers will tell the story of the cemetery. The one in the center will tell the story of the 52 veterans that were buried there. They're still down there. The third one will tell the story of Nancy Leggins Costley, this nationally-known slave lady, and her family. In 2023 now, all of the memorial elements will be transferred to the city. That is, the markers and the flagpole and other things, storyboard and so on. The city will create a passive park, and the Park District has agreed to install the big markers, because these take like nine-foot aluminum poles. And the city will install the flagpole and the storyboard. IDOT will install historical signage on Adams Street for it. Also, we hope this year and expect dedication, celebrations will be planned for the over 2,600 Peorians who are still buried under work lots and buildings down at that location near the corner of Adams and Griswold. Most of them were born in the United States, from 26 different states. 380 were immigrants from 12 countries. And this is very interesting, and it gives us an indication of the times, the 1800s. Over 62% of the people buried there were infants through elementary school age. It's absolutely amazing, but of course, you know, stillbirths and child deaths were just much more common than today. So I want to recap very quickly a list of the donors and the grantors for this Freedom and Remembrance Memorial. Freedom, thinking of the soldiers. Freedom, thinking of Nancy and her never-ending fight. From the time she was 13 in 1826 until 1841, when she was declared free, she continued through four court cases to try and get her freedom. And the guy that finally did it was Abraham Lincoln, 20 years before the Emancipation Proclamation. Here are the donors and the grantors. The local roofers union I mentioned, the City of Peoria, Peoria Park District, Peoria Historical Society, Peoria Riverfront Museum, the Peoria County Genealogical Society, Illinois State Historical Society, the National Abraham Lincoln Association, the William G. Pomeroy Foundation out of New York. They gave us nearly $4,000 toward this project. And this was the first project in their long history of donations that ever involved an African-American of significance. They were very happy to do it. Sons of the Union veterans of the Civil War, daughters of the Union veterans of the Civil War, the sons of the American Revolution, Peoria American Legion Post Two, and generous individuals from several states. So that's the story. 200-year history of Peoria wrapped up in one little spot down on the South Side that is now going to have, with your approval, a memorial that I think we in the city can all be proud of. So open for questions.
Mr. Hofer, I want to congratulate you for your tenacious determination and leadership in leading the effort to create this fitting memorial for Peoria's lost citizens. I applaud you, and I ask that you will help me to applaud.
Thank you. As I have told people before, these kinds of things are not done by one. They are made to happen by many. And I hope that all of you will feel good about being a part of that many that makes this happen today. And I wanted to close on another history comment. History guys hardly ever quit talking about history. But I think you'll find this one interesting. 350 years ago this summer, two guys, Father Marquette and an Indian trader by the name of Joliet, along with a crew of five other Frenchmen, if you can imagine this, all in two birch bark canoes paddled upstream past here, probably in early August of 1673, 350 years ago. And it's just amazing when you think about divine providence, because they left Quebec up in Canada in May, came down to St. Lawrence, through the Great Lakes to Green Bay, up the Fox, down the Wisconsin River to the Mississippi, down the Mississippi to about where Memphis is today. They turned around and headed back because they were afraid to get in the hands of the Spanish down there. On their return, they took a shortcut that was recommended by the Native Americans to go up the Illinois River to the Michigan Lake and then back to Quebec. And they came back, they were back in early September. So I mean, we're talking about four months, and think about how many miles that was on the water paddling, for heaven's sakes. You know, and it's a good thing they did, because when they came past here, they saw the value of Peoria, and they got that word around, and it wasn't very long. And a guy by name LaSalle and another guy by the name of DeTonti soon were here. And as they say, the rest is history. Peoria. So I'll leave you with a question, though. Should Peoria celebrate the 350th anniversary of its discovery this summer? So I'll leave that with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson? Thank you. I just want to thank Mr. Hofer for his work that has been going on for, what, almost two years now or longer?
Let's see. It's 2015 when Ev asked me where her great-grandpa was.
Okay, okay.
We know he's down there because he's in those old records. We did put a stone in his memory over in Fond du Lac, where all the rest of the family is buried, and we put it right smack in the middle of all the other family stones. Interesting, my wife's family was first in America in 1650. My first family members were in America in 1707. Her first family members were in Peoria in 1850. Mine were here in 1860. So she's got me beat on that, too. But at least I found great-grandpas.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your diligence and your hard work, and I look forward to participating in this ceremony once we're able to get things lined up. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do you have a motion?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that item number 23063-A, approve a real estate transfer for 3917 Southwest Adams Street in Peoria at 61605 be approved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Reganbach. Additional discussion? Councilmember Ruckrico?
Just very quickly. Mr. Hofer, you might not remember this, but a couple of years ago, you and I were in line at a funeral, and you were talking about this research as it was, I think, kind of starting, and it started to get to roll. And it was a long line. And we spent quite a bit of time kind of talking about the Moffett Cemetery, and it was in its infancy at that time. It was a wonderful story then. It's a wonderful story now. Thank you for sharing this, for the broader picture, and for what you're doing to make for sure that future generations never forget it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion that item number 23-063, letter B, approve and intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria, Pleasure Dr. and Peoria Park District be approved.
Seconded by Councilmember Grayup. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Twenty-three dash zero six four is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution approving an annexation agreement, including a subdivision plat for property generally located east of North Knoxville Avenue, west of Old Galena Road, north of East Boy Scout Road, and south of Cedar Hills Drive, identified as parcel identification numbers 09-16-400-001 and 09-16-300-004, Peoria County, Illinois. And this requires two-thirds vote of corporate authorities, or eight votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe I'll turn it over to Director Doolin to just provide a quick summary of the item.
Director?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. So the item in front of you is an annexation agreement for a property outside the city limits. Based on the city of code, the City of Peoria has extraterritorial jurisdiction in a 1.5-mile radius around the city of Peoria. Because this property falls within that jurisdiction and does not want to connect to public sewer, they have to come to the city of Peoria per code and have an annexation agreement which allows for the subdivision of the property. I believe we've shared a lot of information over the last few weeks, specifically about this parcel. I think some of the questions that have come up are about the future development of the property. I'd like to just say that the action in front of you is the annexation agreement specifically related to the annexation and the subdivision of the property. Any future development that would occur, and I think that some of the concerns about the floodplain that may exist in the area would be worked through the county of Peoria. We did touch base with them this morning and confirmed that they have very similar regulations that the City of Peoria had, and any development that would occur in the floodplain would have to adhere to all of their rules as well. This property is not contiguous to the City of Peoria. As stated earlier in the public hearing, located between this parcel and the City of Peoria is the Medina Wall. It's unlikely that this property would ever potentially become contiguous with the City of Peoria, but the reality is it's still important for the City of Peoria and the residents of the City of Peoria to have this agreement in place to protect the residents who live close to city boundaries, to ensure that zoning stays what it is. Future development, future changes to zoning, they'd have to talk to the city about. So it does add a level of protection to our residents, which is why this rule is in place. So it does add a level of protection to our residents, which is why this rule is in place. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from council to Director Doolin? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What was the result of the vote from the zoning?
Four to one.
Four to one? Thank you. And just one question for City Manager. When was this rule or law started, and what are, as a councilman, what are our responsibilities? When, I mean, to me, it looks like, okay, if I want to be a good neighbor, or, you know, I don't like this at all, but no, I have taken an oath to serve my community, the City of Peoria. If we don't like something like this, what are the procedures to eliminate something like this?
Maybe I'll ask our Corporation Council to weigh in as well. We've had this in place for a number of years. We'd have to, I'd have to look at the actual ordinance to see if it references the date that we've had that in place. You know, the General Assembly has given cities power outside of their boundaries within a mile and a half to plan for orderly growth and development. There was a case that came out of Sangamon County that was dealing with an annexation in the village of Chatham, which gives municipalities strong discretion over annexations of properties. And this is, at this point in time, obviously, it's not likely, since the Medina Wall is in place, that this property would ever come into the City of Peoria. Probably not likely during the period of time that the annexation agreements would be in place. But if it does, for whatever reason, this just ensures that the city has the ability to say that that property should come in if we ever abut it and we ever decide that we want to bring that into the city. The subdivision and the split allows the rights of the property owner to go forward to do what he wants to do, to put the single-family homes on those four parcels that would be made from this. This is not uncommon. I think that the community development staff has put together a pretty compelling presentation that we want to come back to you and talk to you about, that talks about the annexations, and particularly some of the annexations that have occurred by the village of Dunlap, pre-annexation agreements that have occurred, that are moving closer and closer to the city's north and northwestern borders. And I think that ultimately, the city needs to have that ability to say how we want to grow, when we want to say that it's time for us to grow. And I think that's important, that we protect that right as the City of Peoria. This is not the first time that we've had annexations in Medina Township. In fact, I believe there have been six different annexations. There's a map that we presented to you, it's on your desk this evening, that shows that there were six annexations that have occurred in Medina Township that are currently not part of the City of Peoria. But those annexation agreements were executed, and there was never a concern about the city coming forward. We allowed for that development to occur. Some of that's in Mossville, some of that is near Alta, some of that is west of where we're talking about. So ultimately, Last Chance Bar and Grill is a good example of that. That's in Medina Township. There was an annexation agreement for Last Chance because they needed access to public sewer. We don't currently abut them. They have public sewer. They're not currently located. So there are a number of these examples that have occurred, and I think that, quite frankly, we just need to protect the city's rights in terms of looking at deciding how and when the city wants to grow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Manager, there was one gentleman that mentioned the agreement is for 20 years, but he indicated that there's a small print that says that it can be extended by mutual agreement. This question may be for legal counsel. Is that true?
The annexation agreements operate like any contract. Parties are free to extend those agreements. The original agreements are limited to 20 years, but at the end of those, many annexation agreements now have evergreen clauses and things like that, similar to boundary agreements with adjacent municipalities. So it's quite common to have an annexation agreement be extended if it's still necessary for the parties to protect all the interests involved. And sometimes in larger parcels, where there's a long-term phase development, you'll see that happen quite often in a number of jurisdictions in Illinois.
So that language is not unique to this particular agreement? That language is likely in the village of Dunlap annexation agreements or other area agreements?
Madam Mayor, I have not examined any of those agreements, but I would be surprised if they aren't in some, if not all of them. So I would say that the City of Peoria here is within its one-and-a-half-mile jurisdictional limits, but there's no limitation on how far away from a municipality an annexation agreement can be executed. And we see that in some, from some of our neighboring jurisdictions. There are annexation agreements within our mile-and-a-half boundary that are beyond a mile-and-a-half from those jurisdictions. And so I think the idea of protecting the development, future development of areas around the City of Peoria, to be in harmony with the development of the City of Peoria is what these annexation agreements are focused on. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, discussion? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I've got a few questions. I know, Mr. Doolin, you and I spoke earlier today, so they may be the same questions, but just so the public understands. And we've received additional communication from the City Manager, I think, late this afternoon that covers some of this, but is there any possible scenario? How likely would it be if this was approved that the city would ever be contiguous with these properties?
I think as we heard today from some Medina Township officials, that they're not in support of this. So the likelihood of them annexing the Medina Wall property that's owned by the Medina Township is, sounds unlikely based on the discussion tonight. So fairly unlikely that they might become contiguous, but that's what the barrier is, and it doesn't sound like that's going to change anytime soon.
So can you just explain what the wall is for the public?
It's a, it's a, some parcels that are specifically owned by Medina Township that stretch around kind of our northeastern border, that are, kind of go along with the city limits on those side, and the city, because those aren't in the City of Peoria, cannot kind of extend its boundaries beyond that because they block it.
And maybe if I could provide a little bit of historical context to the Medina Wall. And I think that the wall was put in place when the city would annex property, and the township of Peoria would grow along with those annexations. So that law was changed, and so now township boundaries are fixed. Okay? So the only differences would be fire protection districts, because we have a city professional fire department. So that would, that, the fire protection district levies would go away, and library districts would change, because we have, the city has a public library. Those are the only two taxing bodies, really, that would change. So now, if we annex property in Medina Township and it comes into the City of Peoria, Medina Township still gets the tax revenue from that, as does the Road and Bridge District. So it is not the way that, so it was, I think, a defensive measure that was put in place to stop the city from growing when Medina Township was losing their tax base, which is no longer the case.
And I guess as a follow-up, you mentioned this in one of your communications about the benefit that Medina Township has had.
On the flip side of that, you're exactly right. On the flip side of that, when the city grows and the city is in Medina Township, if we're annexing property and property values go up, that grows the tax base for the township as well. And we saw that when we implemented Growth Cell 1A with the county and the city, and we planned out the residential development in the area that's west of Allen Road, and it, that runs out along, through, west of Allen Road and, why can't I think of the East-West Street, where Station 20 is located, Fire Station 20? Wilheim, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I'll ask District 5 Councilman Seer to tell me that road. When we extended Wilheim and we built the houses, and most of that area of that development is inside Medina Township, so that's generated a significant amount of tax base growth to the township and to the Road and Bridge District of the township as well.
Okay. And I have another question, but I think if the city were to vote this down, does the property owner have any other option to divide his property?
Counsel?
I mentioned previously that many jurisdictions in our area would be able to extend an annexation agreement from their village to this parcel and provide the same relief that the city is. But in order to have a subdivision without the sanitary sewer, they'll need some accommodation from some municipal entity. I don't believe the county would accommodate that presently. So in order for the village, or municipal land control to apply, an annexation agreement has to be crafted. But there's a number of municipalities that might accommodate that.
So I guess, is he within a mile and a half of Dunlap?
I mentioned earlier that, first of all, this parcel is not within a mile and a half of Dunlap. It's also not within a mile and a half of many other jurisdictions that would have the ability to do this. I didn't want to isolate Dunlap. But as I mentioned, very near this property, there are parcels that are pre-annexed by Dunlap that are well beyond their mile-and-a-half limit. So there's, you know, other options for this property owner, but then the city would not have asserted its control in harmony with our other areas that are very nearby. And so we're protecting our own residents, even if we never annex these parcels by doing this. Thank you.
Okay, and I have one more question, if that's okay. The one thing that does give me concern about this proposal that I talked to Director Doolin about, if we approve this, we're allowing the single-family residential development on each of the four lots without it being connected to a sewer. And nor, I mean, our policy for, since I moved here and worked here, I don't want to say how long, I guess almost 30 years ago, has always been that you can't annex into the city unless you're connected to a sewer. So that gives me concern and pause, why we would approve this.
I would respond that our own code anticipates that these matters would come forward in the same fashion that this has, and I'll quote, "All subdivisions of land within one-and-a-half-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction must be served with a connection to public sanitary sewer systems unless," there's a couple provisions here, but this one, "if the resulting division creates lots less than 40 acres in size, and the property cannot connect to public sanitary sewer system, an annexation agreement must be approved by the city, and that annexation agreement is subject to review by the City Planning and Zoning Commission and approval by the City Council." So we have anticipated that in some areas like this that are much larger and can absorb that type of development might be subject to approval by the City Council. And so what we're achieving here is we're allowing this development that won't be on a sanitary sewer, it'll be a well-inseptic system, like many rural estate areas are, and that if it further develops, it would have to, it would have to have service by sanitary sewer, which would be, in that area, a pretty tremendous engineering feat. So I think that this would protect the issues that were raised earlier as far as water quality and things like that because of the size of the parcels. Thank you.
Okay. Can I, one more follow-up then?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Director Doolin, how, or maybe, I don't know if it goes to you or to the manager, do we know how many properties we've annexed that aren't connected to the sewers?
Well...
Years? I mean, is it just a handful, or is it?
Every single one of the parcels, other than Last Chance that I talked about in Medina Township that's on that map...
The 23?
Twenty-three parcels, other than the two for Last Chance, because they're connected to public sewer, because there's sewer available in that area, do not.
Is there any other area?
But they're not in the borders of the City of Peoria. We have pre-annexation agreements with those parcels, just like we're talking about here, and that, those agreements last for 20 years, and until and when we ever abut that, it's going to stay in the county.
So those parcels are not in the city?
Correct.
I'm asking if there's any parcels that we have annexed?
Yes. I'm not, we have a significant number of parcels on septic system in the City of Peoria today. Everything, if you get, if you get on the east side of Knoxville, north of, north of the Dairy Queen, that's all septic system there.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
If I could as well, in 2021, the City Council approved the annexation of parcels on Dixon Road, which is...
And what?
Dixon Road, which is east of these parcels, but in the same northern area, outside of our city here, and on the other side of the Medina Wall, that, without sanitary sewer hookups. Similar situation, large rural estate-type properties that could absorb that use without presenting the environmental problems of very intense urban-like development on septic systems. And then there was also Klein Road that was approved in 2021, that also was developed in the same general area without connection to sanitary sewer. So just within the last two years, there were a couple different scenarios identical to this, that this council approved under similar circumstances. So there's a history of us doing this, and our, as I mentioned, our code anticipates that these matters would come forward like this one has.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments? Can I get a motion? Councilman Seer?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I've been sitting in this chair for six years, and I had a few difficult moments. I just don't agree with what's going on right now, but I believe in our zoning commission. I believe in the oath that I took to follow our rules, so I will make a motion, as much as I don't like it, because I want to be a good neighbor and don't like to pick a fight with anybody, but I need to preserve Peoria. So I'll move to concur with the request from the City Manager and the community above.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Councilmember Jackson? If you can cast your ballot.
I apologize, I have a question.
Motion passes with one nay.
Madam Clerk? We are at unfinished business. 23-051 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending existing special use ordinance number 15194 for residential cluster development in a Class R3 single-family residential district to build a duplex with waivers... to build a duplex with waivers for the properties located at fifty-seven twenty-three and fifty-seven twenty-seven West Woodbrier Lane, Peoria, Illinois.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. If you all recall, at our last meeting, this item was deferred because there were some additional due diligence that needed to be performed. And I'm excited to share that it has been executed. Uh, I would like to thank the Villa Grande HOA, um, and then also the engineer and the developer, uh, that are a part of this as well too. So we have successfully landed this plane and I'm excited to move for approval for item twenty-three dash zero fifty-one.
Seconded by Councilmember Euler, any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay, oh, uh, motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash zero fifty-two is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending existing special use ordinance number fifteen one nine four for a residential cluster development in a Class R three, single-family residential district to build a duplex with waivers for the properties located at fifty-seven thirty-one and fifty-seven thirty-five West Woodbrier Lane, Peoria, Illinois.
Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you again, Madam Mayor. Also, I would be remiss if I not thank Assistant Director, uh, Leah Allison for her help on this, uh, effort as well too. Uh, with that being said, I would like to approve item twenty-three dash zero fifty-two. Thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at new business.
Is there any new business? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would just like to take the opportunity to recognize our Bradley Braves on their significant Missouri Valley Tournament win over the weekend. And I asked, uh, the manager if we could turn the lights on the bridge, red and white, uh, this weekend in honor of their trip to St. Louis. And, uh, Public Works obliged, so, uh, make sure you check out the bridge this weekend in honor of our Bradley men's basketball team. Thank you.
That's great, yes. I don't see any more lights, but my understanding is that the Peoria High Girls Basketball Team is going to state. Is that correct? So congratulations to them as well. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the City Council, and I believe we had several cards.
Okay, and we're going to start with, uh, Bill Jones, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight I come on several different things I want to, uh, discuss, some good and a little bit of bad. One, I was here back in July, I think it was, or June, at a meeting, and I had a little bit of criticism for your chief. Um, before I actually met him, I had talked to the mayor the last time I was here and let her know how I felt about that. And I wanted to tell you after meeting him and a few times at a picnic and several other occasions, I think he's the best chief that Peoria's ever had. That's my opinion, you don't have to agree with it. I know he's probably making mistakes, a few of them, and, uh, he probably will again, like the rest of us, we all do that. Prior to meeting him, I was mis, you know, prejudgment of him. And I want him to know, Chief, I think you're, you ain't completely took care of the problems here in Peoria, but I'll tell you, he come into mess, let's just be honest, he come into mess here. And, uh, I do think he's making big steps to correct it, and the statistics show that, you know. Do we still have crime? Sure we do, but every other city does. Mayor, I do, and I'll say this, I know a lot of people don't agree with me, and some do. Uh, majority of them do, I think you're the best mayor Peoria's ever had, that's my opinion. You can disagree, like I said, we all can disagree and still have respect for one another. Another thing I want to get to is a gentleman behind me, him and his wife, they're standing directly behind me, holding a sign. I know some of you have seen it, um, they've been on social media and things. I know some of his family, some of the friends, they told me to get with them, and I watched some of the video, and it was appalling. Chief, there is a gentleman that was one of your officers, and I said that I would do this privately, I won't bring his name up here tonight. He needs to be addressed by the way he, uh, conducted himself, not just with them, but with me. Last week, uh, during this shooting, where there was eighty rounds or eighty-something round shot at the house next to where my sister lives, I was there after that happened. I was there back in November of last year, not even, what, a few months ago, when this occurred, uh, shooting occurred at the same house next to her with the gentleman that lived there. Her house got hit, but the reason it affects me is because it had hit my sister's home and her van with forty-five slugs, you know, caliber slugs and high-powered rifle rounds. I told the officer there last Sunday about it, one of them was, you know, Mr. Collins. Um, I know his brother and some of his family, real nice guy. Um, I'm sure Chris is a nice guy, but in this case, he was absolutely 100% wrong. There was 20 other people standing next to me. There was a gentleman that owned the house that was shot up, he was one of the, I believe he was the landlord or the owner. He approached me from fifty feet across the street, and the media was there, talking to another gentleman, a neighbor, and he was, uh, sitting in his police car, ten feet away with the window down. And this gentleman, I didn't know who he was, he come up to me and another neighbor, hearing us talking about the problem, and he approached on private property and started yelling and getting in our face and that. He was about two inches from getting his jaw broke. Um, I didn't do that, I held my, you know, held back, told him to leave. I said, man, we don't know you get away, so on and so. He starts running his mouth, getting nose to nose, and Mr. Collins, instead of getting out and addressing him, says, hey, 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 Bill, he says, he's trying to be navel-y. I said, did you hear what he just said? I said, he's came fifty feet over on the private property into a private conversation, and I don't even know who this guy is. I said, you need to tell him to get back over where he go, you know, where he's at, you know? And he never did that. He addressed me, which is incorrect. So I wanted to him, I wanted you to, wanted you to know that. I told him I'd be speaking to you tonight, um, if you were here. Also, I wanted to let you know, this gentleman here has been, if you look at the video, just look at it. Chief, if you could give him a, a little bit of time, I told him I would tell you that. If you could give him some time to talk to him about that. You don't make the laws, but you do enforce them. And I told him, you was a man that, a good guy, I said, if you, you know, at least give him a few minutes of your time afterwards or talk to him in private. Thank you guys, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next we have Emily Hageman.
Hi, it's me again. Um, I am Emily Hageman, for those of you who don't remember. I don't want to beat a dead horse, so I'm not going to try to take up a ton of your time. Um, I have a unique position because I have been at the forefront of the operation Save the Rivermen on Facebook. While my husband has been here for nine years, this position has granted me visibility of people knowing who I am. I'm used to standing behind him, he towers over me. And they've been able to share their heartfelt stories with me. I have people share about their mental health issues, losing a significant other, suffering from social anxiety, having a multitude of physical and health impairments, and honestly, my own fear of speaking in front of people, which I'm trying to overcome now. Um, what every single one of those people have in common is that they have found a home in the Rivermen Organization, and I feel like we are being heard by the comments I heard today, um, that's, was really touching, um, to me. I appreciate all the work that you've been doing, uh, this is not over. I've been attending all of the meetings and following all of the stories in the news. I prom, I won't promise that I know everything that you guys are doing or how you're doing it, but I am willing to learn about it. Um, these have been my major takeaways thus far. It has been made pretty clear by the Peoria Civic Center that a deal has not been reached, um, which we understand. Madam Mayor, I know you recently stated that you don't want the city to like overstep in those decisions, um, but I'm hoping that maybe you'll reconsider. The money was and still is a major hurdle, and we still need to secure a deal. Uh, the only thing that we can do as fans is attend meetings and make our voices known. So here we are, attending Peoria Civic Center meetings, attending City Council meetings, and speaking to the Rivermen Office as well. What you see in front of you is only a small percentage of the people that want the Rivermen to stay. What you can't see is that there are people all online watching as well. There are rival teams' fans online that are watching. Uh, that's saying a lot, because my husband is known as a pest in a lot of rivals' eyes, so the fact that they're willing to even watch these meetings to hear these things and hopefully, uh, come in favor of the Rivermen is major. And it kind of shows that even though there is some type of rivals, that we can come and support one another, um, in these decisions. So, um, I know that sounds really dramatic, but it's very, very truthful. Um, I implore you to take a minute to get to know all of the fans that the Rivermen mean so much to, uh, have a conversation with those people, um, because I've been just having amazing conversations with, um, people that I wouldn't have normally got to talk to. So thank you all for fighting for us, and we appreciate all you're doing, so thank you.
Next we have Brian Burnside.
Hello, Mayor, men and women of the City Council. Friday, about one thirty, um, our son was kidnapped, uh, by the hands of the City of Peoria Police Department, uh, Chris Collins, to be precise. He was taken under a fraudulent warrant issued for a Majesty Burnside. This has been, this was validated at the time that the warrant was, uh, for a Majesty Burnside, not my son. They was looking for a baby girl named Majesty Burnside, not my son, that was taken, and they knew this, and they still, uh, took him. After this happened, we went to the police station and asked to speak with the chief. Uh, we was told the chief was not there and would not speak to us. Um, and they told us that he might not even be in town at the time. Um, from there, uh, we've been getting the runaround, it's been four days, we still don't know where our son is. Um, the police refused to, uh, reverse their, um, fraudulent decision in taking my son under the identity of a female baby by the name Majesty. And, um, to this point, we still don't know where our son is. Our son is breastfed, we don't know if he's being fed, uh, because he can't eat blood from his mother. And, um, we haven't laid eyes on him in four days. We're very worried, nobody's told us anything, nobody's taking this situation seriously. And I would like to direct the mayor to, uh, have the chief of police do his job and return our son that was wrongly taken from us.
We also have like fifty affidavits from people that are very close to us that know that, that our son is not Majesty and to attest to the kind of mother and father we are and how we raise and take care of our son.
Yeah, so.
And like you said, we haven't seen our son in four days. You know, I need my son, I'm, I'm a mother at, you know, at the end of the day. And this has been the worst thing ever.
So, uh, like she said, we have fifty witness affidavits. We shared these affidavits with, uh, the court that issued the fraudulent warrant or wrongful warrant, however you want to word it. They have not acknowledged the fifty affidavit petition that we have signed by, uh, men and women stating that this is the wrong, uh, child that was taken, and also that we are a great mother and father more than willing and able to take care and care of our son. There was, and they also testified that there's never been any danger posed to our son, which I guess they had anonymous phone calls that a baby girl named Majesty Burnside was in danger. But again, it's nothing to do with my family or my son, because that's not, I don't know that person.
And what is your name, young lady?
Nicole Burnside.
Burnside?
And I'm Brian Burnside, the mother and father of Mrs..
Okay, thank you, we'll speak to you briefly afterwards. Next we have Suzie Cranford.
Hello, my name is Susan Cranford. I'm thirty-eight, born and raised in Peoria, a two thousand and three graduate of Woodruff High School, and a proud supporter of the Peoria Rivermen. I am the past, present, and future of the Rivermen hockey. The first game I attended was March of nineteen eighty-eight. I was three years old and in awe of what I was watching. While I don't remember much from the early years, it is the foundation of which I have built my life on. From the International Hockey League to the American Hockey League, the East Coast Hockey League, and our current Rivermen of the Southern Professional Hockey League, I have been a small part of the thrilling wins, the heartbreaking losses, the small victories of first goals, and the tear-jerking retirement of longstanding beloved players. I've been there for the highs and the lows and the absolute elation of winning championships. While my feet have never stepped on, onto the ice to battle for the team, I have been in the stands to support them through it all. In March of twenty thirteen, the St. Louis Blues, who at the time owned the Rivermen, announced they would be removing the AHL team from Peoria, leaving us without a franchise. To say I was devastated was an understatement. That's when Bart Rogers, the late Bruce Sowers, and other local legends stepped in to provide Peoria with a franchise in the Southern Professional Hockey League. Although the level of hockey decreased, the passion for Peoria Rivermen hockey only increased. Our current Rivermen team features eight players from Illinois, including three from the Peoria area. Those players who grew up in this area, uh, watched the Rivermen and dreamed of becoming them one day, and here we are, their names on their back, the Rivermen logo on the front, skating out to the roar of the crowd at Carver Arena. They give their blood, sweat, and tears to be able to put on that Rivermen jersey and make Peoria a place to be proud of. I am the past, the present, and I pray the future of the Peoria Rivermen, and I am not alone in this either. I have a hockey family. They aren't blood-related, but they are heart-related. They are the people I see every time I step foot into the Peoria Civic Center. They are the people that season to season continue to support these men, win or lose. Some grew up same as myself, supporting them from a young age, others have become fans in more recent years. My family includes the players too. They are my brothers who look out for me, just as I look out for them. The men who join me at local restaurants for dinner and drinks and to catch up after long road trips, to celebrate wins and to just spend some quality time together. Unlike artists who come here for one night and take their money back to their home states, these players live in Peoria for seven to eight months of the year, make friendships and connections within and outside of hockey, and put their hard-earned money back into central Illinois. So when you're asked yourself what you are voting for, or when you come across the option to advocate for the Rivermen Organization, please know that you would also be a part of forty-one years of family, and you would become part of the present and the future. Advocating for the Rivermen not only affects those of us in the stands today, but also affects those on the ice, those working at concession stands, ushers, security, and even those who work in cleanup and changing over the arena between basketball, concerts, and hockey. In September of twenty fifteen, the legendary Wayne Gretzky- In September of 2015, the legendary Wayne Gretzky, the best player to ever play hockey, was in Peoria. He said, "Peoria's history of backing its minor-league hockey teams, regardless of what level they are at, is solid." Even the great one knows hockey has, or even the great one knows Peoria has value in the hockey world, and I hope that you all know that also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cranford. Next, we have Julie Bonar.
My name is Julie Bonar. I am a resident of Limestone Township. However, I'm here this evening as the president and CEO of Neighborhood House, which has an over 125-year history here in Peoria. Neighborhood House is proud to announce our participation in the 21st Annual March for Meals. This is a nationally celebrated, month-long event that aims to celebrate meals on wheels and our senior neighbors who rely on this essential service to remain healthy and independent at home, now even more so amid a lingering pandemic and high inflation. Throughout the month of March, we will be sharing vital information about our program on social media to highlight the impact of Meals on Wheels. From March 20th to 24th, we will once again celebrate our annual Community of Champions Week, in which council members Euler and Allen participated last year. The annual March for Meals celebration commemorates the historic day in 1972 when President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965, and this included a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. This critical support and federal funding has fueled the growth of the Meals on Wheels Network for more than 50 years. At Neighborhood House, our program serves close to 1,200 seniors every year. On a daily basis, we are producing and delivering over 800 hot meals to our neighbors. Many of our clients are faced with the impossible decisions of having to choose between medication or food because of their current medical and economic conditions. These circumstances make our program crucial in protecting our most vulnerable and oftentimes neglected neighbors. More than a meal, our volunteers and drivers become an essential social lifeline for those who are homebound and cut off from interacting with the rest of the community. The demand for our service is great. Each year, we see a significant increase in demand for our services, and we are so thankful for the support of this community. But there is still so much more that we can do to ensure that everyone in need of our vital lifeline can benefit from being well-nourished and more connected to our community. And my ask is this. Tomorrow, I will be sending out an email asking each of you to give just an hour or two of your time during our Community of Champions Week. You could help prepare the meals to be delivered, or as council members Euler and Allen did last year, actually help deliver a few meals to our neighbors. I ask that you please consider giving of your time to connect with the homebound seniors in our community. Thank you so much.
Ms. Bonar. Brad Salisbury.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council, again, for this opportunity to speak to you in regards to the additional funding for the Civic Center. My name is Brad Salisbury, and as I mentioned at your last council meeting, I am not a resident of your city. However, I believe my thoughts on this matter are worth your consideration, and I thank you for your efforts in resolving this funding issue that you've taken tonight and the plan for the Civic Center. You've taken the first steps to continue that solid backing of which Wayne Gretzky spoke, and reinvest in a venue that was designed from the start to host hockey before there was even a professional team in Peoria, and maintain that functionality and vision for which the Carver Center was designed and has offered for the last 40-plus years to this community. I understand that the replacing the ice plant is expensive, but it's an undertaking that should have been planned by the Peoria Civic Center Authority, boards, and management over 20 years ago, when the original ice plant was refurbished the first time. Instead, we are scrambling at the last minute for a solution to an environmental and functional problem while things like carpet, branding, and replacing a working scoreboard have been deemed a higher priority. None of those, in my opinion, have the impact on the quality of life in this region that maintaining professional hockey via a new ice plant will have. The prioritization of wants over needs by the Civic Center manager are why it's vital that if providing additional capital to the Peoria Civic Center, the ice plant replacement be a specific requirement to receive any of the funding. Doing so will ensure that the money intended for the ice plant cannot be reallocated for some other purpose, and will help ensure that good-faith negotiations take place between the management of the Civic Center and of the Riverman. As a fan of hockey and someone who wants a vibrant downtown, I'm counting on the council to prioritize this funding needed to continue a 41-year tradition of minor-league hockey in Peoria that is a staple of the community both on and off the ice, a vital part of the Peoria downtown entertainment experience, bringing countless memories to people in and out of Peoria. And if you issue bonds for this, I will be one of those people in line to purchase those bonds and put my money where my mouth is. Thank you.
Celeste Restrepo. I don't think I pronounced your name correctly.
You were really close, Restrepo.
Okay. Thank you.
So thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I think we can all say that ice plays in Peoria, right? That was evidenced by the 1,300 people that quickly amassed themselves into a group for Operation Save the Riverman. One thing I want to talk about is something that we haven't been really talking about, and that's if we don't make this work, if you don't make this work, in essence, I think in a way it's going to steal the dreams of our children. So let me give you an example of that. Anyone who's a parent knows that you never know what's going to stick with your kid in terms of interest. In my case, my child fell in love for the first time at the age of four with hockey, thanks to attending a Riverman game. I worked in public affairs at Caterpillar at that time, a sponsor. Our division offered some tickets. My husband and two sons and I had never been to a game. We went. Nobody in our family played hockey. Nobody was a fan. My husband is from Colombia. It's not a country known for hockey. And of course, what happens is after the first Riverman game, my youngest son, who was about four, I think, at that time, wanted to play. And I will confess to you right now, I was personally opposed. It was the sport, the most equipment, according to my fellow sports friend Moms. And we were a soccer family, shin guards, a ball, a bag, bottle of water, good to go. I don't like the cold, and I confess, we tried to put him off, and we successfully did that for two years, thinking watching the game would just be enough. It wasn't, and we gave him the opportunity. He loved it, we loved it, and it was a chance for him to shine and do something that nobody else in the family did. He gained confidence. The innate skills we didn't know he had for speed and fast reflexes were a perfect match, and it translated into other sports as well. And this is what the Civic Center ice does. Yes, it provides entertainment, and it gives families a chance to experience sport and competition. It won't be affordable for people to leave the city, many of them, and go somewhere else to have that type of experience. But most importantly, it gives people and children a chance from all backgrounds to discover a passion, to fall in love with something different, from not only seeing the Riverman, but from seeing Disney on Ice and other ice dancing competitions. Having ice and the opportunity to view sports on ice in our city just simply enriches the fabric of our community, much like Chiefs baseball, which is something that this city has also supported financially. It gives children an opportunity to envision something they don't experience within their own culture, within their own neighborhood. And that simply is not going to exist here without ice to host these professional-level type events, and that should be valued. It is unfortunate, as a lifelong resident, that I have memories from being a child of listening to my parents talk about how many of those that sat around the horseshoe just simply did not make good decisions with our taxpayer dollars. In 1976, we started paying the hotel and restaurant tax, and the commitment to those citizens, all the way back from then to now, was that money was going to take care of the Civic Center and going to keep it up. As a matter of fact, in today's dollars, Councilwoman Kelly was asking about how much the building was worth, in today's dollars, it was $331 million that was committed from the state and the city and federal dollars to build the Civic Center. We're now on the hook for $40 million for the hotel and Skywalk. These are improvements that most families will never experience in this area. Please, please spend our tax dollars on things that benefit and add to the quality of life for many citizens. 7,000 schoolchildren a couple months ago were here, and they enjoyed a Riverman game. That was the first experience for many of them. How many of them will walk across the Skywalk? How many of them will be at the Pire Marquette? We deserve to hold on to our championship team that has that long history of community outreach. We deserve our elected leaders to step up just as enthusiastically as they have in the past when it comes to working with a developer that maybe does not bring to fruition something that affects so many. We want you to work hand-in-hand with the Riverman in that way. Relationship that's going to continue to benefit our children, and building a relationship that will benefit them as well, so they can be successful and stay in this community. Please do that work for all of our citizens, including our youngest, and they deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. John O'Connor. John O'Connor. Joyce Blumanshine.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Ali, and members of the council and staff. I'm Joyce Blumanshine. I'm here to talk about high-pressure liquefied carbon dioxide pipelines with the many topics that you must deal with. This is another one, and I want to express some concerns about it. It will be, as far as we know now, coming into the city of Peoria on the south side through ZIP codes affecting possibly 61605 and 61602. Those are areas that for decades have had discrimination and lack of investment, and thanks to your council's work, to the leadership of the mayor, Councilwoman Jackson, for the efforts to put improvements onto Western Avenue, a new fire station, the Equity Commission, the Joint Commission for Peoria, a lot of good things are happening. So we have to question, please, why would we, as a city, want a new clear and present danger to public health and safety, an environmental justice concern that could be here for decades to come into Peoria? Now, industry will say they have all the latest and best technology and all the controls and monitoring. Let's just look last week at Ohio, at a train derailment. Accidents can happen. Things can go wrong, and toxics can mean dangers to public health that could last for a person's life or even end their life. A release of a cloud of CO2 in high levels can mean minutes to escape. What about elderly? What about people who are homebound? What about people who might be sleeping? And how fast can emergency people evacuate potentially thousands of residents in the area around an explosion? We don't know. We don't have the details. I urge you to consider, this is about money. This is about profits for industry, and I think it is hubris, or let's say it's just really audacious, of industry to think they can bring in clear and present dangers, risks that are hazardous, new risks that we know about now, to a community that has already been discriminated against and suffered. Industry will make money off of this, and they're also claiming the blanket of greenwashing, which many environmental communities question. We have to ask how much more energy it takes for the processes that this will be taking, and the fact that in Decatur, where carbon capture and sequestration has been going on for some years, in spite of their promises to sequester a million tons of CO2 a year and many millions of our tax dollars and other funding, that sequestration site for carbon dioxide has only reached about 500,000 tons a year. So they are half of what they promised. Many, many more times, up to 12 million tons, is now being possibly considered. How is this going to happen? How is this huge, new, taxpayer-funded, large infrastructure build-out of CO2 pipelines going to solve the climate crisis? These are all questions that seem way beyond what you should have to consider, but it will be here soon, and we, I myself, as a citizen, are urging you to get the full facts, urging you to get the full details of the ramifications, liabilities, and potential risks to not only your citizens and taxpayers, but to your EMT staff, to your first responders. I thank you very much.
Ms. Blumanshine. Next, and last, we have Tracy Fox.
Hi, my name is Tracy Fox. My address is 15215 North Ivy Lake Road out in Chillicothe, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Central Illinois Healthy Community Alliance. We're the group that formed about 10 years ago to help address the pollution out of the Edwards Power Plant, and ultimately brought the city great relief from that, as well as an $8.6 million settlement for the cleanup. We're proud of that work, but not resting on our laurels. I work closely with Joyce and colleagues at Sierra Club on environmental issues, and Joyce brought the pipeline issue to me, and I looked at it, and I was familiar with these pipelines. They run through rural areas, they tear up farmland, they render the soil low-yield, and they're risky. But it never occurred to me, until she showed me the map, that they would actually think about running one through a city, through a dense urban area. The way that high-pressure CO2 pipelines work is that they push the material until it liquefies, so it has to be held at really high pressure over the length of the pipeline. And because those pipelines are designed typically to deal with the lower pressures of gas and oil flows, they really aren't quite effective for CO2, and a lot of engineering work shows that they can actually unzip along the length of the pipeline, and you get these big clouds of CO2 that emerge because of accidents, you know, poor engineering, fatigue, whatever the metals problems are, workmanship issues, welding problems. I mean, there's a long list of things that can go wrong. So you have this cloud that basically likes to set in low places. Studying the Edwards Coal Plant bloom, I can tell you that pollutants also like to set in low places. That's why the emissions for the south side of Peoria were such a big problem. So now you have these people who are the most vulnerable in our community. This is the issue, this is the area that's an environmental justice community by U.S. EPA screening standards. It's the area that was named as an R3, under-invested, high-crime, other justice-deprived area under the cannabis bill. It's the ZIP code that we all know as the poorest and most vulnerable in our city. And now we're going to think about running a high-pressure CO2 pipeline along the railroad routes there and put all these people potentially in harm's way. And this is a really serious accident scenario, because the gas is affixiating, internal combustion engines, spark plugs fail to work, emergency management would need to get in there carrying oxygen, and whoa, all the oxygen is stored on the south side where the accident could potentially happen. You know, this just seems completely inappropriate. Um, you know, this just seems completely inappropriate for a dense urban area, for fifty-seven-hundred of our poorest households to live within a mile of this kind of ticking time bomb. And so we say, well, why wouldn't anyone propose this? How could it possibly benefit the city? Well, there's some super lucrative tax incentives that came out as part of the IRA, and there's also a ticking time bomb in terms of the pipeline safety regulators. They're contemplating a little better regulations for pipelines, but those aren't even, uh, in draft format yet. So the guys who want to build these, they are in a rush. They want to claim the tax credits and get in before the really safety-conscious regulation is even in draft form. Um, you know, and this worries me, because this plant that would be bailed out by all of this, that would capture its carbon and magically continue to run for another twenty-five, fifty years, they're not a good neighbor. I mean, every time you go down to the south side and it's above seventy degrees, there's a horrible odor. That has to contribute to a lot of the problems in the area. This plant burned for a week. We had to get mutual aid from Chicago to put it under control, and you heard your own firepeople tonight say that we left money on the table in trying to clean up after that cost. And the plant has been a serial under-reporter and polluter. That, that story is a little bit complicated to tell, but I'll say three things about it. Number one, they have a long history of not reporting data at all, so who knows what's going on? Number two, the majority of the chemicals that they emit are not criteria pollutant. The EPA doesn't issue you saying you must keep it under this level to be safe for human health. The guidance from the EPA on many of the things that come out of that plant are basically do the best you can, use the maximum, uh, available control technology, not a hard limit, not a health-based limit. And finally, I would say that in two thousand and eight, when this plant first came on my radar, it was on the front page of USA Today, because it was named as one of the very worst emitters of pollutants within a mile or two of schools. That was called the Smokestack Attack Report, and I went to the Health Department, and we tried to contact ADM, and we could never find any solution. This time, we don't need to be left searching for a solution. There's easy steps the city can take to put itself on a footing to fight this. Number one, you need to think about, how are we going to engage in this process at the ICC? Thank you, Mayor. Um, number two, you need to make a public resolution that says, "We want to put a moratorium on any action of this right away, and longer term, maybe we just don't want it all together." A big economic report's going to drop, you're going to hear a lot of things about how beneficial this will be, but come back to and remember, why do these benefits have to come at the expense of the same people we always act, ask to sacrifice? Um, I hope that environmental justice will hold the day, and the city of Peoria can resoundingly say no to this atrocious project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Madam Clerk?
We are, we are at executive session.
Okay. I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following adjournment of the City Council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act five ILCS one-twenty slash two C-one, to discuss the performance of a specific employee and pursuant, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act five ILCS one-twenty slash two C-twenty-one for approval by the body of closed session minutes. Uh, moved by Councilman Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilman Velpula. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously, and thank you for your service.
Hey, good to see you.
Hi.
I had emails.